Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, October 18th, 2021, 6:00 P. M. This meeting is Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary and ask you to please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Jordan.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Shock.
Here.
Commissioner Halliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag and to our rightful justices. One nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice.
I will ask that we have a moment of silence for our Assistant Chief Kurt Stinson, who just passed. So let's have a moment of silence, please. Amen. Thank you. Due to the recent death of Assistant Chief Stinson, Police Chief Hagan Day was postponed, so the item has been postponed and for a later time. We'll move on to item four, Consent Agenda. Manager Harlow Shock.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening. Mayor, I recommend you entertain a motion on consent for claims paid on September 9th and 10th, as well as 17th and 24th, in the amount of, or a grand total of $2,484,397.74.
Commissioners? Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just a moment, please. I'd move to approve claims paid September 9th and 10th, 2021, in the amount of $2,219,805.34. Claims paid on September 17th, 2021, in the amount of $262,417.27. And claims paid on September 24, 2021, in the amount of $21,275.13, for a grand total of $2,484,397.74.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Madam Harlow Shock.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Next, I would request on consent that you also entertain a motion to accept the 2021 State Homeland Security Program Hazmat Sustainability Grant. The total grant will be applied for $40,000 to address and sustain equipment and purchases of supplies that ensure the readiness of the hazardous materials team within our team jurisdictions.
Commissioners, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to accept the 2021 State Homeland Security Program Hazmat Sustainability Grant funding in the amount of $40,000.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. And final discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications proposals from Commissioners. Anything from the Commission? We'll move along. Report of the City Attorney.
Nothing this evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I appreciate the delay and want to recognize also that this community and the family of Assistant Chief of Police Kurt Stinson are all grieving and of the loss of our team and our team, our member, our friend, and our colleague. And we'll share to you arrangements more as those become available to us. I've also been made aware that Chief Hagan has and will be delaying his retirement for a couple of months as well. As you know, I was anticipating the opening of the position and the recruitment later in the year, and this does not change that timeframe, but it does allow an opportunity for the team to have access to Chief Hagan's wealth of knowledge. The loss of Kurt to the team, his over 25 years of service was quite a significant amount of of knowledge, and having the chief here for those additional months will help us balance out. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that revision in timeframe. So appreciate that that move by Chief Hagan. Thank you, Chief. This week, Mayor also marks one year of service as your City Manager. And during our next commission, commission meeting, I'll share a list of successes as well as the first report out on our work plan for the fiscal year. But I wanted to share to you that the expectations the Commission had to me for the first 16 months of my contract, I have almost completed and look forward to sharing that update with you. I also want to take a moment to say thank you to you, the Commission, the city leadership team, the directors and the larger city staff and the community for their support. And my thanks to the city staff who work hard to help me bring operations back to stable ground. We're implementing a lot of firsts in this coming year to stabilize the city. We will be doing the same. Stabilizing is really the intention, and the reason I'm pointing out and reinforcing the importance of a consistent and stabilizing operation is really related to my role as your City Manager and the experience of the director team. Stability does live within that group and within their service. And just like you, I swore an oath to those duties in my charge within the Charter, the Code, and the State of Montana and the Constitution. So I appreciate the expectation you have all shared and those laid out in these documents. And really, I, I do believe that the experience, professionalism, and education within our leadership team and myself are delivering the stability that Helena has, has asked of us. I want to also note that as we move into the next year and starting any new projects, I'm sure you'll be contemplating those things that you would like for me to be implementing. And I want to really share that I want, love more clarity, and as you know, I've asked for on new programs. And last, this last weekend, I spent a great deal of time reviewing our city ordinances and making sure that we are working towards accomplishment of what the Commission has asked of us, including within the ordinances, those city departments and the charge within them. And most notably, I've noticed that new operations and services that we've been discussing aren't in there, and this is an opportunity to, to have a greater greater, greater conversation around those. Those items in particular are within the social services of behavioral health and homelessness, and want to make sure that we're responding to the ask of the Commission most clearly. As your City Manager, it's been interesting really listening to the community and trying to understand who I am. I've had comments around a lack of understanding as to what my decisions are and, and how I might be moved politically in, in particular areas. And I, I really appreciate and appreciate your support the, of the role of City Manager. And I take an oath as a City Manager to follow an ethics code. And as part of that, it is important that I stay out of politicking and provide policy recommendations based in the expertise of your team that is hired as the staff. So what happens, though, as time goes by and we lose leadership, there's a loss of institutional knowledge, and that loss has occurred here, and we're working to rebuild that. It was really a loss that many feared, maybe even 15 years ago, with the retirements of baby boomers and a massive loss of institutional knowledge. So we're rebuilding that knowledge. I really want to underscore that this isn't about a gap in the team. The team is exceptional. They work hard. They provide excellent review and spend time necessary to provide their expertise in conversations that are informed as part of recommendations to you. So what was here and what might have been expected of the organization is not here today, but was here seven years ago. The services are still being provided, but the team has been waiting for a manager who will champion their ideas and their work and defend their expertise and accept fault when needed. That person is a leader, and I believe I've been living up to those expectations of the team and that of the city's charter, the voice of the voter, and what the Commission expects of me. So I appreciate this, this opportunity and look forward to sharing with you in the coming weeks, the update on my activities. Additionally, would like to share to you that we'll be launching our economic development recruitment tools, and specifically, we've been, as you recall, approached by Dennis Quaid and his team to do some videos. As a result of that reach, I had increased partnership with our tourism Special Improvement District, as well as MBACK, the BID, DHI, all of our, our business acronyms in support of economic development. They have all been part of and are working, we are all working together on synchronizing the identity of Helena. What I have learned from all of the people that you have connected me to and who have reached to me is that Helena reflects Montana. It reflects a balance and that you and we all observe our boundaries and yet at the same time lift each other up within our priorities. We have over 50 service agencies within the City of Helena. And we also reflect the history of Montana. We have a fantastic historic district. District in our businesses reflect who Montana is. We make it easy for anyone to access our amenities and support balance between work fun, hiking in the morning and picking up kids from school in the afternoon, then potentially floating the river in the evening. So we want Montana businesses, grown businesses, to look at us as a satellite location for their homes, for their businesses, for manufacturing, and then expansion into the Montana market. We have our beautiful downtown. We have our wonderful railroad and Sixth Ward District, as well as the airport. All three have unique areas, and we will be working in particular on highlighting what those areas bring to anyone interesting, interested in moving their business and living within Helena. We've also prepared a number of videos included from local businesses who share their story, not only as entrepreneurs, but as expansion in local local areas, so that one can understand what it's like to move their business to Helena and the support offered by this community. This community is exceptional, and the people in it care a great deal for it. And I'm very pleased to be here. I look forward to, to sharing that additional work in the coming months and coming weeks as well. That is the summary of my update this evening. Answer any questions you might have for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rachel, and congratulations on your year one. Comments or questions from the Commission? All right, regular items. Consider first passage of an ordinance granting a franchise to TDS Metrocom LLC and allowing the construction, operation, regulation, and control of a cable communication system within the City of Helena, Montana. Manager Harlow Shock.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is the ordinance granting a franchise opportunity to TDS Metrocom LLC. I will turn it over to Thomas Jordan, our City Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, Madam Harlow Shock. I just skipped communications from Helena Citizens Council. After that, we will get to you. My apology.
Thank you.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Do we have a representative here? Madam Clerk, do we have a representative on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will give John Andrew his mic. He had his hand raised for a moment.
Okay. You have the floor, Mr. Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. John Andrew with Helena Citizens Council. The only thing I have to note is for our upcoming meeting on October 27th, where our guest speaker will be Director David Knopke of the City Transportation Systems Department. And he's going to provide us with updates concerning what we might expect this winter in regards to snow removal, street maintenance, and vehicle removal. So thank you very much for getting me in. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Andrew? Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Now, regular items. A, consider first passage of an ordinance granting a franchise to TDS Metrocom LLC and allowing the construction, operation, and regulation, and control of a cable communication system within the City of Helena, Montana. Manager Harlow Shock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Again, this item is to address the TDS franchise with, within the city, and I'll turn it over to City Attorney Jordan now. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. This is the first passage of an ordinance granting a franchise to TDS Metrocom LLC. It would be a new entrant into the City of Helena, providing cable television service along with internet and telephone service. Federal law regulates almost all aspects of cable service, but a provider is required to obtain a franchise agreement or authority from the city, and state law requires the granting of that authority to be expressed via an ordinance. The city can impose conditions, but they can't unreasonably refuse to award the franchise. We staff, along with our outside counsel from River Oaks Communication, have negotiated a franchise agreement, which is included in your packet. It is substantially the same as the incumbent Spectrum Charter resonant, because federal law requires parity between cable TV providers. We have negotiated the provision of service to various facilities within the city. And as an aside, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting when talking about first passage of application fee for franchise and other telecom applications that TDS has already agreed to reimburse the city for its costs in, in reviewing the agreement and negotiating agreement, which is about $5,050, $500 at this point. This will tonight, if you approve the motion for first passage instead of public hearing, we will have that public hearing on November 8th, 2021. Can answer any questions that the Commission has?
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, for the City Attorney, I know last time when we had part of this discussion with the fees, you had mentioned that the Spectrum agreement, I think, is set to expire in 2027. And I'm just curious if it's not possible, or if there's a way to, that we can, I guess, line up so these agreements would be would be expiring at the same time for when they're renegotiated, or if that would have a, you know, a benefit, because it appears that that continues to be an issue for us with them not lining up.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, that's correct. Charter's franchise agreement would expire in 2027. We did propose to TDS that we grant their agreement to match up with Spectrums, but unfortunately, they would not agree to those terms.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Yeah, just a similar follow-up question in that vein. You know, when the last time that Charter Spectrum came in, the Commission on the first round, I can't remember if tabled it or sent it back or put amendments on it that it then sent back to Spectrum. I'm just curious why we don't think we can just simply say to them, hey, let's have it synced up with the existing contract. And if this is of value to you, then you'll agree to it.
Sure. I, I will, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, I will double check with counsel, expert counsel, but my recollection is is that a 10-year agreement is roughly the industry standard. I can't recall if it's mandated by the Cable Act, but I will, I will double check that. Of course, it's certainly within the Commission's prerogative to, to table the item tonight. If you'd like us to, I guess, re-propose that agreement or agreement language and have it only be a, what would be like a seven and a half year agreement? Or six and a half.
I'll listen to the other Commissioners on that.
Mayor, I have a, just a follow-up question on that. So I'm looking at the memo. I mean, it does indicate that we can sort of condition approval. So I guess that, that is a question, is that a condition, right, that we can put on? And, and so would it make sense for us to table this today to get sort of those full answers before we, before we set a public hearing? I'm just wondering, can we amend it or condition it during the public hearing?
It's Jordan.
Mayor, Commissioner Lachlan, I suppose you can do it either way. I, I think the concern from a negotiation structural standpoint is what, what do we do in presenting an agreement that TDS potentially will not agree to? So I, I think it's probably best to get it sorted out now, although I tend to think it is sorted out. But reconfirm the authority or whether we have the ability, whether the city has the authority to force it upon TDS, and then bring it back once we have a, a firm answer on that. We, we do also, under the Cable Act, have a six-month timeline, and I think we have a little bit of time. I want to say we're at like four and a half months right now. Yeah, four and a half months.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
I guess maybe one other question to the City Attorney. In, in your conversations, were there, were, were there other conditions that you would recommend that the Commission consider in, in approving the franchise agreement?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, you know, we have to by law stick close to what we have an agreement with Spectrum for, so we're limited largely with that regard, but we did, if you look on page 70, 79 of your packet has an exhibit of where we have asked that TDS provide cable drops to. That's a little bit more expansive than Spectrum currently provides, but that comes with a caveat that the cost of providing that service comes out of the franchise fee under the new FCC rules. So what, and I, you know, we have never determined what the cost of that would be with TDS or with Spectrum. I don't suspect it's a substantial amount of money, but it does have to come out of whatever the franchise fee is.
Any other comments?
Um, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would, well, first I'd be in support of tabling so that we could find out further negotiate to get it lined up with the, the Spectrum or Charter franchise agreement, but I'm curious how other communities handle this that do have multiple franchise agreements, because I, it seems if they're unwilling to agree to the, to lining up these expiration dates. I mean, I just, how do other communities handle this? Because if, if we continue to get more requests, you know, it just feels like it is a cycle that will continue without us ever being, like, if we're going to correct it now, should be the time that we, we do that.
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean Billings just signed a franchise agreement with TDS, and it was for a 10-year agreement. I don't know what, what their other agreement with Spectrum or Resonant was, but I suspect they are in a similar situation now where they have two distinct timelines. And since the agreements have to match each other, you have this difficulty of, of properly being in a stronger negotiating position when you have to match agreements.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, just a, a comment. I mean, I think, I think Commissioner Dean's brought up an important point. You know, when we, when we did the last agreement with Spectrum, there were at a minimum, two provisions, I recall, that are added in there that I see in the TDS contract having to do with the HD channel that was provided. Spectrum had some pretty bad language in there that ultimately we, you know, got them to back off of so that we would have the HD channel, and then also the language regarding bundling that got put in there as well. You know, had that language not been able to be negotiated last time, or it been brought up as a unacceptable condition, we wouldn't even have that language today. So it's, it's a pretty important piece to figure out if we can get these lined up. Otherwise, we've created the contract that everyone in Helena is going to have to live with into perpetuity.
Thank you. Yeah, I will also agree that I'll support Mr. Jordan going back to get, get the necessary information we need to move the contract forward. So I will support tabling this item for further reasons.
Mayor, I would recommend a motion, if, if that's the Commission's desire, table to the call of the City Manager.
Okay.
Mayor, should we?
At this time, I'll entertain. At this time, I'll entertain. At this time, I'll entertain public comments. Madam Clerk, would you check to see if we have any member of the public wishing to address this topic?
Uh, Mister Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised online. I have received no written public comment. Uh, the chambers has no one at the podium wishing to make public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are you still without any raised hands?
Yes, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will go ahead and move to table first passage of an ordinance granting a franchise. Uh, to TDS Metrocom LLC, um, and. Um, leave it to the subject of the city manager to put it on a future agenda.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to establish the application fee for cable and telecommunications. Franchises and agreement to use city right of way or other property for the installation of telecommunications facility. Manager Hollis Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Commissioners. Mayor, this item is uh, establishes the fee for cable and telecommunications franchises. And agreements, it is a uh, nominal fee, really, uh, a fee actually common in many jurisdictions. Billings has charged them. We've seen um, locations outside in Washington State as well, the um. That also do the same. Our fee is actually uh, lower than many and uh. This offers the opportunity for the city to charge and reimburse um, our operations for those. Those fees. So I'll turn it over to Attorney, City Attorney Joden.
You have the floor, Attorney Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, uh, Commissioners. Uh, I don't have much to add. Um, we are proposing that the fee uh, be twenty five hundred dollars in your memo is a. Is a what I I feel is a very conservative estimate uh, that lays out the amount of uh, work that. Uh, the various city departments that are involved in reviewing a franchise or telecom. Uh, approval process are required, and and you can see it, it does take several departments, the city clerk. Engineering, Public Works, Transportation Systems, City Attorney's Office, and the City Manager. Um, I think this is conservative estimates as to the amount of time. Uh, we have spent on the on the TDS uh, agreement. I think you can see that. In the amount of outside counsel costs we have incurred. Um, of course, it's relatively new, and so the first one through. Uh, does take a little bit more time. Um. And I will also remind you, which is later on in the agenda tonight, is final passage of an ordinance. Requiring a payment of this fee. So this resolution starts the process to establish the fee. Um, but in addition to this fee, the ordinance requires um, applicants to pay for all out of co-. Pocket processing costs and reasonable outside attorneys and consultants fee. So. Uh, not only will the applicants be paying twenty five hundred dollars to apply, they'll be paying the actual costs. Um, for those additional uh. Cost that the city encouraged to review and process these. Um, I think uh. Cable providers, telecom, um, broadband providers understand these are fairly complicated deals as we just discussed in the last uh, item. And the to get them through the city's process, which it is not accustomed to using. Um, it's necessary to recruit these costs to make them go as fast as possible. Um, so with that, I'd I'd recommend a motion to approve a resolution of intention to establish application fees. And set a public hearing for November eighth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Mister Jordan. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
Mister Mayor, just a question for Mister Jordan on the motion. Um, in the. Second piece of the memo, the new format, it includes the um, to amend Exhibit A. Do you want that included?
Yes, please. Yep. I didn't read it word for word.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public?
Just a question for the city attorney. Um, just because we haven't had it before, maybe um, because I don't understand the terms of art. What's the difference between like a cable franchise with Spectrum and a telecommunications franchise? Or is there none?
Sure, uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday. So cable would be like Spectrum, um, Charter. Or TDS, we did have another applicant in the process, but they withdrew a couple of months ago. Uh, those are your cable providers, usually your triple play. Um, but because they provide cable TV, they have to get a franchise agreement. The telecom would encu- encompass or is intended to encompass. Um, all of the other providers that are not allowed to use the right of way as a matter of right, more specifically broadband service. And we are seeing applications for broadband service um, to use the right of way to put their lines in stormwater or sewer mains. Um, through city parks, and those are along those sa- same lines as cable franchise. Um, there's a little, obviously, there's more leeway. We wouldn't be considering a franchise agreement. We would be looking at a right of way use agreement or something similar. But the processing um, and review of those is very similar. In terms of expertise and time to process.
And so then just on, could you elaborate a little bit more on the distinction between this fee and this cost recruitment? Um, that we're gonna be talking about later. To just understand sort of the distinction between. Twenty five hundred dollar fee, which appears to be based on staff time and other estimates. And then cost reimbursement, which also seems to be based on staff time and reimbursements.
Yeah, so the the application fee is to cover. The administrative expenses and staff efforts to develop, draft, negotiate, and finalize a cable. Or telecommunications franchise or agreement for the use of city rights away. And we were also proposing to require reimbursement to the city for all out of pocket processing costs, including. But not limited to publication of notices relating to the franchise or agreement. Um, and then third, reimburse the city uh, for reasonable outside um, attorneys' fees, consultant fees, or expenses incurred in developing, drafting, or negotiating. Um, documents, agreements that we need to process these. Um. So that the city time is staff time uh, directly reviewing it, but they there might be the need. Uh, when we're reviewing these to engage with outside consultants. Um, especially as we're starting to move from potentially granting a franchise agreement. Reviewing the actual plans for construction and installation in the right of way. And whether, you know, internally, we're gonna be able to handle handle that. That's more of the after the permit is granted. Uh, whereas the the payment for city staff is to get the application to the requisite approval decision.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure we're not duplicating costs on on folks. So then we. One other question, we had sort of a a kerfuffle a few years back. Um, regarding the laying of broadband in the city of Helena streets. Um, discussions about whether or not it's covered under the Public Service Commission's jurisdiction or definitions of the utility. Um, and I think it's not expressly stated in there. Um, but some then some discussions of whether or not, you know, telegraph is still covered because you've got an antiquated code. Um, you know, I I think there are concerns from some that this is an attempt to essentially capture some businesses. Um, that currently, you know, don't need a franchise agreement and that we're we're trying to sweep them in and require them to have one. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, um, we are working on, and I'm I'm familiar with the um, the kerfuffle that you speak of. Um, we are working on drafting an ordinance with our outside counsel to clarify that. Um, I'm still of the opinion that. Uh, broadband is not allowed to use the right of way as a matter of right. Um, I think at the end of the day. Had we gone through the right of way use agreement process, we might have avoided some of that kerfuffle, and we probably. Potentially wouldn't be in the position that we are now with confusion over permits to to dig in the right of way. Uh, and the the conditions that must be met uh, for that permission. Um. I think with that, I I don't think per se this application fee, uh, it's intended to to uh, or. Apply to those entities that are providing broadband in the right of way. Um, mainly to be consistent and so that the city can regulate its right of way. Uh, we are seeing an uh, a potential number of entities wanting to use the right of way. And frankly, w- we're gonna be running out of space given the width we have and conflicts with our existing utilities. So there is, I believe, a need to. To regulate them and review them and not allow them as a matter of right. And the fee doesn't necessarily do that per se, but we are moving and will be proposing an ordinance that clarifies the right of way use agreement regulations. Um, so that we, everybody is treated the same, and we are reviewing reviewing them equally.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mister Mayor Commissioners, I have Kev Ham with his hand raised online.
You have the floor, Kev.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of the commission. Um, I'm concerned about this because it appears to be um, like triple dipping. One of the things that we've run into consistently as we've been trying to build in Helena is that we consistently run into the city not letting people build. The city has stood in the way of getting broadband for its citizens for decades. And this has been ongoing, ongoing, and ongoing. And while I understand there is the desire to never actually do work. The fact is, if companies are willing to come into Helena and they want to be a part of this community and they want to build here. It'd be really nice if the city, instead of saying, oh, we're going to put up several more roadblocks. Put them in, and I would point out, that means that I'm going to have more competition, and it's gonna be harder for me to capture business. That's the goal. In the end, the goal is to make sure that every business, every home, every office has great broadband and great options for broadband. And that requires that the city do better. This sort of, we're gonna step in, we're gonna create a new fee, we're gonna add new processes, we're gonna add more red tape, we're gonna make it worse for everybody. Is just going to consistently do the same thing that has happened with housing and everything else. They'll go to the county. They're not gonna come to town. They'll go away from here. Because you're making it harder to do business here, simply because you don't want to do the job. That's unacceptable. I really, really hope that you will turn around and say, no, we want to have business here. We want to put TSI out of business because we have so many other great cable companies that are coming in and doing this. And that requires you to step up and do the right thing, which is to say no to this, because that's a ridiculous thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kev. Madam Clerk?
Mister Mayor Commissioners, I have no other hands raised. I've received no written public comment online, and it appears that no one in chambers would like to make public comment on this matter.
Comments from the commission? I see one hand. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a quick question um, to the city attorney. So. Uh, I think you, I think you mentioned that um, in the in the circumstance of TDS that the state or that the city has incurred. Did you say about fif- fifty five hundred in costs? So can you break that out? Um. Are those sort of what what you're what you're considering? Um, as like hard costs, or is that factoring in? Um, city staff capacity and time as well?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, that is the cost that um, River Oaks Communications has spent in assisting us. With processing TDS's request for a franchise. Um, along those lines, this is. Cable franchise telecom is fairly complicated, and we are not experts at this at the city, whether it's the city attorney's office. Public Works, City Manager's Office. Um, there are much bigger cities that are than ours that that charge these fees. And have much more expertise than we do to process these. I I view this. Uh, proposal is a means to actually improve the process. If we're going to rely on existing resources. Uh, I think you're gonna continue to see the struggle that we have had in the past.
Um, Mayor, just real quick, just a quick follow up to that. So when you say that th- this is what they're reimbursing. Is it um, outside counsel time, or are you billing your time or staff time? To for it, it to the company as well?
So Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, the twenty five hundred dollars is proposed to recoup city staff time. Regardless of if it's more or not. And then in addition, uh, if the ordinance is passed tonight, which is item ten A. Um, we would also, the applicant would also be required to pay the actual cost of outside counsel. And consultants above and beyond what staff may need to process it. Because I mean, the reality is, w- w- you know, outside counsel and consultants don't just process the whole thing themselves. They're not experts on. Drafting these memos to get before commission. Um. Uh, uh, you know, public hearing notices, so on and so forth.
Right, so sorry, Mayor, just to clarify. So I was, I was speaking about the TDS specific, the fifty five hundred. Is that or is that outs- is that simply outside coun- counsel and hard costs? Or are you also billing TDS for your time and other staff time?
That is only for outside councils' costs.
Okay, thanks.
So, um. Oh, go go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Oh, thanks, Mister Mayor. I had two questions. Um, one is, um, right now, since this is. Um, uh, just up for consideration and has not been passed. What funds are currently paying for? This evaluation to happen. Um, and then two, how many um, companies? Are are currently under review or or, you know, potentially coming to the city um, that we will have to review?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, in terms of uh, River Oaks uh, time, that's a combination of uh, the outside legal services. Uh, line item in my budget and to some degree, um, the city manager's budget. Um, in terms of city staff, it is just built into the work that we do every day where. If for the city attorney's office being borne by the general fund. And then remind me, what was the last part of your your question?
Um, how many of these for how many companies are are, one, you're having to review right now, and then two. Do you, how many more do you expect, let's say, before the next fiscal year?
Um, so currently, uh, we have been talking with a telecom broadband provider. They have not applied yet. Uh, previously, uh, about them, I can't remember if they were first or behind TDS, there was another cable provider that was seeking, and we got actually. Right down to where we are now, which is a final negotiating agreement, and so spent a substantial amount of time on that agreement. Uh, we previously had a company interested in putting uh, fiber. Um, in city utility mains, and we have spent time and met with them, and I think they, you know, the staff. Uh, through the city manager ultimately informed them that. Um, the application was probably premature uh, at this time, and the city wasn't. Ready to consider their application to start putting things. Uh, fiber in city utility mains without understanding um, how their uh. Development and in actual installation processes work, since they hadn't really implemented it anywhere in the United States. Um, so currently, we're still working on one. Um, but you know, the. The impression is that with the federal funding for this sort of work. Um, we're trying to get ahead of the curve and be prepared for those folks who want to provide to come in and provide either additional cable. Uh, television services or broadband.
Any other comments from the? Any other comments from the commission? Are we seeing, uh, I just got one question I want to understand, uh, Mr. Jordan. So with every company that comes in, these fees will be attached. We'll have to hire outside legal counsel, we'll have to hire others to evaluate these fees.
I I don't know that we will have to hire them. I suspect initially we will need that assistance, especially moving forward with broadband.
Any other comments from the commission? Manager Holoshok. You are muted.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to uh weigh in and and ensure that with every company and every franchise request, they are different. Not every business is the same and not every operation is the same. So in the case of this, this uh telecom conversation and the point that um Commissioner Halliday points out is that they're uh, they're words of art and the importance of having those best access to the best who can share how to most protect the city and and allow in what is necessary to continue services that the community is, has and needs is the expectation. So to also just support Tom, uh, excuse me, uh, City Attorney Jordan's point. It's not clear if everyone will have the same burden of review just because every business is different and every service provider is different. We've received requests from uh businesses who want to try and use a variety of different methods. None are the same. So we have, we have to start from somewhere that we don't normally work and we do not have staff on who are experts in this field. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, Mayor, just um maybe a comment and then a question following up on, I think, um, city manager Harlow Shelk's comment earlier. Um, so I, so I, I, I am definitely seeing the distinction between sort of what we have coming up on our agenda and um, you know, the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago in studying that public hearing, really in a recognition of sort of the, the capacity needs. And and the, the hard costs that we know and anticipate we're going to face with these types of agreements. I think there's, I mean, I, I would be interested in Thomas's thoughts. My, what I'm sort of hearing on the one hand with TDS is that we, we have to sort of to some extent mirror, um, or there has to be a fair amount of consistency between franchise agreements. And yet there's still capacity um and expertise that's needed in, in negotiating, sort of doing the due diligence and and negotiating these, these contracts. Uh, so, so that's sort of like one, if you have any kind of response to if they're the same, like why does it take so much capacity? Um, or if they're relatively similar agreements. Um, and then if you could just actually maybe delve a little bit more into how twenty five hundred dollar fee compares to other municipalities. I think it was referenced that other municipalities have, do you have a sense of where that, that sits? You know, we have other types of fees and other departments, you know, building fees and others. So it's not unusual to impose a fee for the processing. But I am curious about sort of how this compares with other municipalities.
Mr. Jordan?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Alaklin, I, I don't know how much the actual fee is. Spent quite a bit of time getting all of this packaged up and I was only able to work with River, River Oaks to find out which various, uh, because of the IR's request, figure out which uh, and uh, local governments around the west require it. And as the manager mentioned, several um municipalities in Washington require the, the payment of fees to recoup the staff processing costs, staff time. Uh, I can certainly contact those uh entities and find out those uh fees for you.
Mayor, if I may, I, I do have the fee amounts for billings and for Kirkland, Washington. The cable TV franchise application fee, which is an expense incurred in reviewing the franchise, franchise application, is uh five thousand dollars in billings. And in Kirkland, Washington, the applicant, an applicant for a franchise to construct, operate and maintain a cable communication system within the city has to file a form and pay a five thousand dollar fee as well.
So um, I know it's been mentioned, but what is, what is our total right now?
Uh, Mayor, uh, uh, just for outside legal services for, for TDS has been about five thousand fifty five hundred. Thanks for the manager for reminding me. Um, Barry in Washington actually had that email, uh, charges a twenty thousand dollar application fee.
And then I think so, so that's the, the kind of hard cost component of it. What we have in front of us in this agenda item is proposing a two thousand five hundred dollar fee. Is that correct? Okay, yeah.
Mayor Collins, that's correct. In, in addition to the um as incurred expenses for outside uh experts and costs of publication uh and so on and so forth.
So then, uh, I know you said, uh, Manager Holoshok said this before, so that means it could varies. It could vary according to um the amount, uh, the amount I was used by, by another company for outside counsel.
Mayor Collins, that's correct. The twenty five hundred dollars will always be applicable.
Right.
Out of pocket costs, uh, as, as, as they are reasonable, could change depending on the nature of the application. And as the manager mentioned, they are, they are not always the same.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, I just had one more question. So um, given your answer to my previous question, is it fair to say that the city's, you know, been incurring a lot of these costs? And say if this or, or um, this resolution were in place, we wouldn't necessarily be, well, one, we wouldn't be out the money. But there's, right now, we're incurring costs and some companies aren't even coming here to provide services to our residents. Is that correct?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, I believe that's correct. Yeah, we, we have met with folks before that he haven't, have even applied. Um, I suppose the other way to go about this is, uh, during the budget process, we will, you know, request money for, for services to provide this, this review. Um, I, I mean, if, if the expectation is that we provide a competent and strong negotiating position of the city, I, I firmly and strongly believe we need to have that expertise to accommodate that.
Thank you. Okay, I don't.
Just a, just a question on the, the fees portion. I mean, it makes, it makes sense to me. I, when we discussed the reimbursement for outside costs, that's always made sense to me. The last time we did Battle Spectrum, it, it really did feel lopsided. It's a good idea for, for municipalities to have that. I'm, I'm still grappling with the cost and I appreciate the numbers because they help put in context for me. This twenty five hundred dollars seemed relatively steep. Um, and I was trying to look up some of our other fees and try to gauge, you know, what a subdivision review fee, street opening fees. And they're all significantly lower and I'm guessing the answer would be, well, we've got a lot of staff expertise in that, right? That's our bread and butter. We do that regularly. Um, I mean, I'm just wondering, is that, is this something that because it's new and different and scary, it takes everybody a lot more time right now? I mean, and you know, we're going to be good to go in the next two applications? Or, you know, do we have to have it that high, I guess, is, is the question.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, I mean, just for example, the city attorney's office, we estimate spending about ten to twelve hours on each one of these, which I think is pretty conservative and a pretty, pretty fair estimate. Even if we have been through them. Um, yes, TDS was, uh, you know, we have to mirror Spectrum's agreement. And if we have a future cable TV provider entrance, we will have to mirror that. But we still spend time in Zoom meetings, reviewing the franchise agreements, editing franchise agreements, drafting the ordinances, memos and public hearing notices, doing research on the various unique characteristics, in addition to outside councils. So we made sure that we're not missing anything local with our perspective. So I think, you know, for example, just the city attorney's office is ten to twelve hours. And that sixty six dollars an hour, you can see that the city attorney's office is about nine hundred ninety dollars, almost a thousand dollars. And when you start adding in the other departments, I think twenty five hundred dollars is a fairly conservative estimate as far as the time spent uh to review these applications.
Thank you. Okay, any others? Manager Holoshok, quickly.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment, Mayor, and remind the commission that this year we'll be studying all the fees rates and uh structure within the city. And this is part of the conversation is to make sure that we can uh clearly identify how we arrived at the dollar amount and uh able to defend that into the future. So those fees that you uh maybe reflecting on citywide are also fees that haven't been analyzed in quite some time. And uh ones that we will be reviewing this year as well. Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. One moment. I'd move to approve a resolution of intention to establish the application fee for cable and telecommunications franchises and agreements to use city right of way or other property for installation of telecommunications facilities and amend resolution number two zero four eight eight exhibit A and set a public hearing for November eighth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just say, I mean, I think, I think overall, I'm, I'm convinced that we probably need to recoup definitely the hard costs and to some extent, soft costs. You know, between now and November eighth, if anyone's interested in, you know, whether or not the soft costs should be decreased, I'd be interested in that. But um, otherwise, I think I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Alaklin.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider an access across city property. Parents Plaza MS eight two one two and Bonanza Plaza MS nine five two six. Near Scott Reservoir to private property. Manager Holoshok.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I do believe that uh Director Leland is also um in attendance this evening. This item is to recommend the commission not uh award the petition and request of an easement across and near Scott Reservoir. And there are additional options, the disadvantages and the work related to this reservoir is obvious. By way of its, our dependence on it, for our drinking water supply and our water security, the reasoning for the um recommendation not to uh award the easement or allow the easement to occur. The city had completed a water master plan, which was presented, which was presented to the commission in December of last year and it outlines uh a higher level risk assessment and resiliency assessment that was also evaluated and this assessment specifically recommended eliminating access in and around all drinking water reservoirs opened um owned by the city. So I'll turn it over to Director Leland for anything further he wishes to share. And I do believe there are applicants and those who are requesting an attendance this evening as well.
Director Leland, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Commission. Just give you, I'll share screens real quick to give you a little more idea of what we're talking about. Is, I don't know how familiar everyone is with Scott Reservoir. It is up above Remini Road and this is our raw water, drinking water. We have two reservoirs out there that is connected by um the Red Mountain Plume. One is Chessman, which is our bigger reservoir, and then Scott, which is a much smaller reservoir. It's much shallower. So we use this water first and this is what we were using during the summertime, um, when we had to go on water restriction. So this one is a very small watershed and uh we take everything from around it. Looking at it is, there's a lot of property up here that has uh mining claims that typically access, as you can see my cursor up here from back around a little lower on Remini. And the Latkes came in to request access across the property. This area in here is owned by a city wat- or city of Helena. And then you have the drinking water reservoir and then all of these mining claims around it. And they're requesting to come across this location here uh to be able to access their property. So they don't have to go through other people's properties. We have had problems in the past with former owners that have come in and have just uh put in, trespassed and put in roads right next to our reservoir that we've had to try and block off and trying to obliterate. But the Latkes have bought that and are not affiliated with the previous properties. But that is the recommendation is they're requesting a sixty foot easement. We are asking to deny that. And with an alternative, if you, if the commission wishes to grant an easement across that, it would be a twenty foot uh limited access easement with some restrictions to uh restrict logging, mining, some stuff that may affect what our drinking water gets there. We don't want to contaminate it and that is our concern. We don't want to have large developments up here that can run off septic systems. They can put uh contaminants in there, mining, of course, um, and logging. So there are some things that we would put on there if the commission wishes to uh still grant an access um agreement across the city property. With that, I'd answer any questions and I know the property owners are here uh to answer questions or provide comment.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the commission? Director Leland.
Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, question for Director Leland or the city attorney. I know the memo indicated that some area that the current property owners are looking to use as the access may have been an illegal road attempted by the former owners sometime back in twenty sixteen. And I, I didn't get the impression that there's a historic use, but I'm just curious. Are we, are we positive that there aren't any sort of historic easements, either by necessity or just use created out there to this property at this time?
Mayor, Commissioner Halliday and um City Attorney Jordan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But all of our research that we have done and looking at previous photos, uh aerial photos in there, that there are no historic uh easements or uses that go across this. There was, I think, back in like two thousand and five, we have an aerial photo and it does not demonstrate any of the roads that go across this from previous uh owners or before. So all the research we were able to find uh with staff, there are, is nothing out there, uh especially also looking at aerial photos.
Thanks.
Director Leland. Um, I know the downside to allowing the sixty, sixty feet. You say contamination of our water system. But what about twenty?
Mayor Commissioners, if I, if I get what you're asking is why we went with twenty feet instead of sixty feet?
No, I mean, I mean, the alternative you say is twenty.
Correct.
So what kind of contamination are we looking at with twenty?
With twenty feet, we're still going to have some sediment contamination going in there. Um, that's our main concern. And then with the vehicles, you are still going to have um limited but potential for uh some of the oil wastes that are out there. So just with the twenty, it's much more narrow or much less um sediment that could possibly run off. And then we'd And then we don't want to have just a big wide road that people, all people could use and go around and start to use this as a main access. And then who knows what the contamination being with four-wheelers up there and whatever else that could be up there if we have a very large road going through there.
Thank you. I see quite a few hands, so I'll just start from the top. Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I get on this screen for, for Director Leland. The, the, their current access to the property is to the east, right?
Mayor Commissioner, yes, it's over here. I will let them discuss it, but I guess there is some potential problems with being able to access and cut off of, of roads. But the, the applicants can speak to that.
Okay.
Mr. June.
Mayor, I just wanted to confirm what Director Leland responded to in terms of a historical access. We've also not gotten any information from the Latkes or the previous owners as to the alleged historical access to their property across city property. Kind of going back to the previous topic, I spent a significant amount of time looking into this, researching it, helping Ryan and his staff craft the memo. But we did not receive any information that we could look at that might help us determine it. We didn't find any recorded legal documents. And in terms of legal authority, we did the best we could with the, with the Mining Act. But we don't see any proof of that access across city property at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question sort of builds off of the question you asked. For staff, relative to the sixty-foot easement versus the twenty-foot easement, do those concerns that you expressed in the memo, there were about eleven of them, that were as a result of a risk and really resiliency assessment that was done by a private consultant? Are those concerns still present, whether it's the twenty-foot easement or the sixty-foot easement?
Mayor Commissioner, they are still present. It mitigates it a little bit, but they are still present because you are going to have still the use that is up there. And that there will be a road that accesses it. So they are still relevant concerns. But they are mitigated a little bit, just instead of a huge sixty-foot road in there, it's only going to be twenty feet. But there are this concerns that are still there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a question for probably Director Leland. So I'm looking at the memo that we received in our packet and I'm looking at page ninety-seven, kind of a third of the way down. It references the, the road that I think was illegally constructed or illegal culvert crossing. It then says that the Hunts applied for and received a permit to install a hardened Ford to cross Banner Creek in two thousand seventeen. Who, who would have approved? Is that the U.S. Forest Service or is that the City of Helena that would have approved that permit?
Mayor Commissioner, as I understand it, it was actually the county that issued the permit. And there's still some foggy facts that are all around it. But as far as I understand, the city was not aware of, of crossing Banner Creek with that, that culvert.
And then would you mind, can you just show where sort of that, that is in the, on the map? Kind of like roughly where the, oh, I can see it. You've got the illegal right there. Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Halliday.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just for Mr. Leland. The Gould Diggin Scott Access Road, which is listed as U.S. Forest Service. Is that a road that is open to the public to use? Or for the whole portion that we see it, is that something that is limited to City of Helena entities only, the governmental entity?
Mayor Commissioner, I, the access road here that is the Gould that is there, this is open to everyone. This is the Banner Creek Road, I believe is, is what you're discussing, and that is open to everyone. That is the road that goes across Scott Reservoir. So I I am aware that there is a very big road that goes across our, our dam or, yeah, the dam right now.
So you, yeah, you anticipated my next question, which was, seems like a lot of people already drive directly adjacent to this reservoir or at least have the opportunity to. But thanks.
So what's, just to follow up with Commissioner Halliday, so what's the contamination rate down there?
Mayor, the contamination rate, it's, you know, it's hard to quantify right now, what the road and how it is constructed. We'd have to look at where all the runoff is going to be and then getting into the Banner Creek and then also into Scott. It would purely depend on what kind of development that we're going to have, how much is going to be in where it's actually going to be constructed on the property itself. And if we're going to experience any clear-cut forestry, which we are saying to limit, if we allow a twenty-foot easement or an easement to go across the property, that'd be our recommendation to limit that. But they still have access and can use their property once they get on it. So those are our concerns.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One final question from me and then I'll be quiet. Maybe the applicant knows the answer, but I'll ask you anyway. Do you know the cost? The various costs?
Mayor, if you're asking cost of the road to be able to be constructed, I do not know the, the two different costs you're looking at to go across here. The applicant said it's about four hundred yards to go across and then this way it'd be miles. But to for construction, I do not know the differential cost between the two.
Thank you, sir. Madam Hollis Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I just want to point out, we respond to complaints routinely around access into the Scott Reservoir, in particular camping and use, especially in the summertime. There's people who wish to fish there. There are no fish. So it is, it is a problem we need to rectify and we are not by use of this, this road, as you point out, as was pointed out, along the, the reservoir itself. So the increased access is the, the concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm curious if Director Leland knows, you know, what their plans for this property are. And I guess why, why they have not exhausted the other options, you know, before coming to us with this.
Mayor Commissioner, you may have to ask the applicants. But what they have expressed interest, expressed to me is that they just wish to have a cabin up here to be able to enjoy the area and enjoy their property. So that is what they've expressed interest to me. As for, you'll have to ask them about exhausting everything as far as the access to go through there. They, we've had some discussions, but I don't want to misquote them on anything that, that they may have done.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Kind of along those lines, I'm assuming these are mining claims and I think there are a number of uses that that could hap- things that could happen on these parcels, logging and so forth that, that, you know, could change over time. And so I guess I would be interested, you know, from the applicant, what the future looked like. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any final comments from the commission?
Yeah, I guess for the city attorney, maybe Mr. Joden, just any thoughts, and I, I think I already know the answer to this. But with granting an easement across City of Helena property, issues with, you know, old easements that you've seen in your time, what happens when all of us are dead and gone in ten years and nobody's used the road and then someone else buys it? We're trying to do a project out there. I'm just curious if you have sort of any thoughts on sort of granting these access easements across city property for, for folks, especially given that we're out in the county.
Yeah. Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday. Easements generally run with, with the land, so future property owners would be able to use this access if granted by the city. That's why the alternative motion is not an easement, but an access agreement that would be personal to the, to the Latkes so that we could review it with a future user and, and control the access if the use were to change or expand. An easement would be permanent. Of course, we could draft language in there that would restrict it. I think from my perspective, from the legal perspective, it would protect the city's interest better to grant an access license agreement rather than a full-blown easement.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, at this time I'll entertain some public comments. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised online at this time and I've received no written public comment. But I do know that the applicants are in the chambers and would like to speak.
Sure. Who do we have at the podium?
Hello, my name is Michael Atka.
Hello.
My wife and I are the owners of Companion and Imperial Load, which are located near the Scott Reservoir. We are seeking a key to the gate and a limited access to the existing road that was created by the City of Helena and is below, not next to the reservoir. With Mr. Leland's help, could I have some pictures that I brought, please?
Sorry, wrong one. I, just a second.
Thank you.
I will let you know in a second when I find him. If you want to keep going, I don't know what happened to him, but just give me a second.
I kind of need that picture. It kind of shows grades and stuff.
Maybe I'll speak first.
Sure.
I'm his wife, Karen Latka. Along with my husband, Mike, we are approaching this situation as neighbors in a partnership with the City of Helena. We got, we want to go about pursuing access to our property through the proper channels and working together as neighbors. We, along with the city, have a vested interest in preserving the pristine reservoir and watershed area. We have no interest in doing anything on our property or on the city's property to destroy the area. We believe there are advantages to the city for granting our access. One, fire mitigation. We have an interest in doing the same type of fire mitigation as the city has been doing, however, on a much smaller scale. Two, another set of eyes on the property for security to keep a watchful eye over activities near or on the reservoir. And three, we believe that there are advantages to partnering with your adjacent neighbor. We are not building a town up there. We want a quiet place for us and our two adult children to enjoy for generations to come. We will follow all Lewis and Clark County building codes for the small cabin and outbuilding on our forty-acre property. We have no interest in mining or logging other than fire mitigation. That would ruin the quiet solitude of the area. We are not the Hunts. We have never met them. We have gone out of our way to make sure that we are good neighbors to the City of Helena. We have no interest in doing anything that would jeopardize our neighbor, our relationship with our neighbors. We are native Montanans and have owned another mountain property in the Little Belts in Judith Basin County that we operated in cooperation with Fish, Wildlife and Parks and the U.S. Forest Service in the block management program on a desirable property that adjoins the, and adjoins the Judith Game Range. Mike has been an employee of the City of Helena for twelve years at the golf course. I am a current member of the Board of Directors of the Montana Community Foundation and an employee of Carroll College. We, along with the city, have a vested interest in preserving the pristine reservoir and watershed area. We have no interest in doing anything on our property or the city's property to destroy the area. We are excited and dedicated to preserving Big Sky Country for future generations to enjoy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr.
You have, is this the map you're looking for, sir?
We do, thank you.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. All right, we move to the next, please. This is a current aerial map of Scott Reservoir area. There's an upper gated road that is next to the reservoir and a lower gated road, which we are requesting access. If I may, I'd like to show a few more pictures. Next. Hey, this is gated, this is a gate located at the Hancock property, which was constructed in approximately October of two thousand and twenty. Next, please. This is a road on the U.S. Forest Service land constructed in approximately August of this year. Next, please. That's its continuation of the road. Next, please. That's continuation. This is the start of the new hunt easement filed in June of this year. Next, please. This is where the easement goes through very soft ground. There are a lot of springs that run year-round up that area. Next, please. This is the easement for Companion Load through Imperial Load filed approximately June of two thousand and twenty. Next, please. Next, please. Next, please. Next, please. Next, please. Okay, this is the proposed easement on city property. Next, please. Next, please. Next, please. There we go. Thank you. Finally, this is the view of the proposed road looking up the ridge that divides runoff into or away from Scott Reservoir. Road is located below the reservoir. There is no runoff into the reservoir from this road. Thank you, Mr. Leland. One of the reasons we purchased the adjoining Imperial Lot was that so we could eliminate another possible cabin being built in the area and have a little more control over fire mitigation on and around where we would like to build our cabin. We recently purchased a large chipper shredder to mulch limbs and debris instead of burning. As we, along with the city, are trying to lessen the fire dangers in the watershed area. In construction of our cabin, we plan to follow Lewis and Clark County approved septic codes. So there won't be any concern over failure of the system. With approximately five feet of snowfall and seasonal access for construction from June till about now, you can see it'll take us quite a while to build and mitigate. We look forward to working with the city to clear any concerns you might have to help in granting this easement along. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any other comments, public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any other comments, public comments?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no other hands raised or written public comment online. It appears there is no one else in chambers to make public comment on this item.
Thank you. I am. Back to the Commissioners. See Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thanks, Mayor. I think I have a couple of questions for the applicants, if that's okay.
Please.
So first, you you had several pictures of the what I think were described as the the new hunt easements. Why were those easements established?
They established that when we bought the second piece of property. Because of the Hancock's that put in the gate up above that we used to have access through so that they. Give any access to people going through there except for the Hunts because they knew the Hunts were selling their property. So they said they were going to force the Hunts into building a new road to go around there so they weren't driving through their property and where they were going to build their cabin. But the Hunts easement comes to the Forestry Service property. And they cut road through the Forest Service property too, which we don't know if it was allotted or not.
Okay, and then maybe one more question, Mayor, and I think perhaps Commissioner Dean was posing this question earlier. Have you all had conversations with, I think, is it the Hancock's about access through? What previously the Hunts had access to the property?
Yes, after we bought the first lot, about three months after that is when I was going up there. And he was constructing, this is Sean Hancock's significant other. Was constructing the gate at that time and I questioned him about that. And he said that he would not. Let people go through there once they put the gate on, except for the Hunts. And that if we wanted to change that, we could see them in court.
I'll pigtail on that. The other reason, I heard the question about exhausting other efforts, other ways to come in, Commissioner Dean. There, when you come in that way, you cross multiple parties. And now that gates are being constructed, we'd. Much rather work with the city to go across one person. For a little less than four hundred yards versus figuring out this other way to come across. And talking to our surveyor, the contamination, the. Risk of contamination is minimal because we're below the reservoir. We're not asking for access. Right next to the reservoir, we're asking for on the other side of the ridge.
It is not where the Hunts had their road, where their illegal road they put in. It is not that road.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the applicants and then. A question for, I think, Dr. Leland or the city manager. What does winter access look like? If this were to be constructed, say, as the as the alternative twenty foot road?
Well, I think they got snow up there. We didn't go up this last weekend and it's about shut down. Usually we can get in there. We did get in there about June, the last two years. We looked at the area up there. So it's about now, they're starting to get snow where you can't access it anymore till June.
So you won't be using it in the winter?
If we do, possibly if we can get up there with a snowmobile, that would be it.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, a question for Director Leland or the city manager. I mean, I certainly understand. Why they are coming to the city, but I I am also concerned about, you know, does this set a precedent? Especially when our, the. The water system, storage master plan and and the risk assessment that you noted. You know, says that we really need to be careful about. Any type of contamination or or risks to. Some of these water storage facilities and I I guess. What thoughts do you have on, you know, what this looks like into the future? And, you know, is it a, is it a greater risk than? Then it's worth at this point?
Commissioner Dean, Mayor. Thank you for your question and I will turn over the technical aspects of risk. Aversion that we anticipate working on for the next several years, especially since that plume. Is such a. A large. Risk to all of the systems. So I would share to you that. I'm not aware of other easements that we've made in that area, although I would turn it over to Director Leland to specify. What that looks like. How we can continue to secure that reservoir. And reduce access is the the greatest question that. We're we're contemplating, having seen that road as has been pointed out earlier as well. So I'll share. To Director Leland, if he has more detail on those two items, the. Potential for future security and then also other easements that we might have.
Mayor Commissioner, as far as other easements, I'm not aware of any and. I don't know if this actually sets precedence or not. I think it's an individual one here, especially if we don't access, do an access. Easement, but an access agreement. But as far as securing it, we are looking to put substantial money involved. Like we have with Chessman Reservoir, where we are going to look at going and fencing the whole area that is our property to try and. Mitigate anyone from actually coming in and and using the reservoir as we have seen up there. However, the road will still continue across the dam. We are not going to be able to get rid of that dam. So that is our biggest liability that we have out there and at what level do we want to. Increase what our risks are with continued or additional accesses that are out there. Would be up to the city commission up there, but we are going to put considerable money in to secure the reservoir itself. And then also to help with the Red Mountain Plume that goes all the way across to help with our water. Supply that is out there to secure it and to increase it.
Thank you, Director Leland. So the applicants, what's what's the cost? For the sixty and or the twenty?
What's the cost of to?
Yeah, to to you.
We talked to Mr. Leland a little bit about, we'd have to hire a, not a contractor, but.
Professional engineer.
Engineer to see what the road, how to construct the road across there so that it would. It would be, we wouldn't have any erosion or runoff. They say we've worked with Mr. Leland on that to see and we don't know what the cost would be until we hired this person.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just have one final one.
Go ahead.
So I'm curious, from what I read in here, it sounds like the other property owner who. I think told you all that they would see you in court if, you know, you tried to gain access. Do they spend, do you know if they spend a lot of time around? I know it said that they were from out of state in Colorado. Do, you know? Is there any type of relationship that currently exists there? And I guess another question. For Mr. Leland, has the city had any communications with them about, you know? Being supportive and helping getting safe access?
I, I think he is up there at the property because I know there's cameras around there that he put by the gate. And she, Sean Hancock, lives in Colorado. Until he, I think, gets. A cabin built where she come out, but I don't see him that much anymore. Because I don't, well, we didn't go up there at all this year because of fire dangers and no access.
Mayor Commissioner, as far as staff, we have not tried to facilitate any access across their property. We have not been involved. With that, we've just responded to this easement, easement request up there.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any other comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised, no written public comment online.
Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Kind of a comment, I guess, I'm, you know, in initially reading this in the packet, it's. I was quite sympathetic to. All of the risks. Expressed in the memo of, you know, the. The access easement. And. The potential difficulties. Of that, of which eleven were expressed and. But in in hearing the whole story, I guess I'm, I'm. I'm really having difficulty denying at this point. Any access. And so I guess, I guess I would be interested in in, I'll just make the motion, just. Yes, if nothing else, for point of discussion. To approve a twenty foot wide access agreement across Perseverance Plaster, MS eighty two twelve. And Bonanza Plaster, MS ninety five twenty six. With the following conditions, if approved, one, exclusive easement only to the Latkes for a single development. Two, the access road will be gated. And fence across city property. Three, no logging or mining trucks will be allowed without approval from the city manager. Four, the easement can be revoked if activity on the property jeopardizes the City of Helena's drinking water source. Five, the road to be designed by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Montana and approved by City of Helena engineering staff.
Second.
Any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one follow up question based on that?
Please.
I had similar sentiments to Commissioner Logan coming into this and this has been a very helpful presentation. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear in that. The the Latkes are the only folks that'll be using the cabin that they're building and it's. I'm mostly, this is not going to be an Airbnb or VRBO sort of situation. Is that accurate?
No, and if you would, if that would be the preference of the city to write that in, we'd be. Happy with that. No, this is purely for our enjoyment.
Thank you. So I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would ask. The city attorney or or city manager, what would be the correct? Amendment to add that kind of condition to Mr. Logan's. Motion.
Wouldn't that be the alternative process? Because there were two that would get provided, right?
I I just mean, could it just be a condition? Underneath that, yes, the alternative, the twenty foot one with those conditions, but add add that additional condition that that it's. It remains a, you know, single family cabin without. That Airbnb type of activity.
Okay, come in, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, we can, we can certainly add that language in if. Commissioner Logan and Commissioner Halliday are amenable to that amendment.
Yes, I'm also in favor of the alternative process.
I'm, I'm good with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You won't regret it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D Delta, the applicant withdrew. The application, but we are still obligated to. Seek public comments. So it was considered first passage of ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number three zero nine seven. And amending the official zoning map for the City of Helena for a zone change from B two general commercial. District to commercial light manufacturing district for the property legally described as track A. Of the H R A minor subdivision as shown on certificate of survey number three zero three four one seven one. And generally located south of Canyon Fair, west of Bombard Lane, east of Seabrook Soccer Complex. And north of Irrigation Canal, Canal. In the city of Helena, Montana. So the application was withdrawn and so, but we're still obligated to have public comments. So are there any comments from the public on this issue? Madam Clerk, do you have any raised hands or written comments?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no raised hands, no written public comment on this item, no one in chambers to make comment on this item as well.
Thank you. Item E Echo, consider the dedication of Vandelay Avenue right of way. And Oak Street right away for property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue and east of North Sanders Street. In the city of Helena, Montana, Manager Hallashock.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Mayor, this item is coming back through. We had early conversations and. The on this dedication at Vandelay, the team was requested to go back and share the ideas brought up by Director Knopke. Around the variation in width and those. Items were not accommodated by the applicant as a result. The Director Knopke is on this evening. I'll first turn it over to Director Hagan and. Her colleague Ellie Ray in the Department of Community Development to provide. Presentation of this item and its dedication, the dedication right away. And then also offer up that Director Knopke share his summary around what was offered and the resulting. Application. Thank you.
Director Knopke, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioner, I think it would be beneficial for Director Haugen to go first to describe the. The request for dedication right away and then I can follow up with the examples that were noted by the city manager.
Director Haugen, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners. With your permission, I would like to turn this over to Ellie Ray, our planner two. Who's who's put put together the memo? So, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I will be quick, as you have already heard the bulk of this presentation previously. Again, before you this evening. Is the consideration of the dedication of the Vandelay Avenue right of way and the Oak Street right of way for property that's generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh and east of. North Sanders Street at the old Capitol Hill Mall site. By way of background, this application was submitted on behalf of D N M Development LLC to reestablish Oak Street and establish the eastern portion of Vandelay Avenue. From what had previously been an alleyway, both of which were vacated and discontinued all the way back in nineteen twelve. The amended plan as submitted shows the establishment of the north south portion of Oak Street. As a connector between Prospect and Eleventh and the eastern portion of Vandelay between Sanders and Oak Streets. The applicant's objective of the dedication be for seventy foot wide Oak Street right of way and a fifty to eighty foot varied width Vandelay Avenue right of way. The city has adopted engineering and design standards and also has complete street standards, the public right of way accessibility guidelines known as PROAG. Speaking to ADA accessibility as well as fire codes that require a minimum sixty. um speaking to ADA accessibility, as well as fire codes that require a minimum sixty-foot width right of way for local streets such as the two that are before you this evening. Um the proposed Oak Street right of way with a seventy-foot proposed width does uh comply with these standards and policies. Um however, the Vandelay Avenue right of way with portions being as narrow as fifty feet wide does not comply with the these standards and policies and therefore um fail to provide the necessary components for a local street. Um speaking to those components, the slide shows you what um the components of a local street are with setback um sidewalks, landscape boulevard parking and travel lanes. Um this was taken directly from the engineering standards that Director Knopki will be able to speak to before or after I have finished. Um but each side of the right of way must have at least a sidewalk or a bike path. All streets must accommodate the complete street policy and be consistent with the city's Greater Helena Transportation Plan. There are some advantages to the right-of-way dedication for you tonight. The first of which is that these streets will certainly enhance transportation connectivity, not just within the old mall site area, but also to the adjacent residential districts, the north and south and even the primarily Capitol Complex District. Um and in establishing these right-of-way, it will also help promote the redevelopment of these vacant properties that surround it and encourage economic growth within Helena, which has been in accordance with not only the growth policy, but the city's adopted urban real district plans. The disadvantages with the present proposal though is really tied to the Vandelay Avenue right of way and that it doesn't meet the city's engineering and design standards, um nor is it satisfied the complete streets and PROAG standards as proposed. Um and in so doing, it can have some consequences down the line for provision of emergency services to any future developments along funding the property, the right-of-way, um which could raise concern long-term for liability to the city. Uh the Transportation Systems Department, Public Works Department and Fire Marshal have all recommended that the right-of-way be dedicated at sixty feet wide and provide all of the required components of a local street in the interest of public health and safety. The recommendation before you tonight, therefore, is to move to deny the the dedication of Vandelay Avenue right of way and Oak Street right of way for property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue and east of North Sanders Sanders Street in the city of Helena, Montana. I'm happy to take any questions for you. I do also wish to note that um the applicant Marcus Fonda, as well as his engineer Greg Worth are present this evening. If you have questions directly of them. And with that, I'm happy to hand things over to Director Knopki.
Thank you. Director Knopki.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll share my screen with the uh city clerk, could you uh enable my screen sharing, please? Thank you. Um what you see before you is the, at the top is the requested road with no on-street parking, which leaves a twenty-foot or a, you know, what was proposed is that fifty, which doesn't accommodate all the aspects of our complete streets policy. Below is the modified sixty-foot right-of-way that does um include all the components of a um complete street as um required by the engineering standards and the city's complete streets policy. The uh primary reason for the additional right-of-way is is for when roads are built, improved or extended or expanded, we have the appropriate right-of-way width to do that. Um when we limit ourselves with a smaller right-of-way with um those components, if the street is, in in the case of this, if a street is needed to be widened or whatever, um then we we either have to cut into the the boulevard or the other um non-motorized um components of that street. So that's the reason behind our minimum street width or our minimum right-of-way width, which is sixty feet. I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to the requested sixty-foot right-of-way that needs standards and complete streets uh policy.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just uh, just in the interest of uh full disclosure before we begin our discussion here, I did want to mention that at their request, I met with Tyler Emmer and Rick Hayes representing Opportunity Bank and Marcus Fonda of DNM Development on October fifth. At that time, they had simply expressed their concerns that they had submitted revisions made after the September seventh meeting that we had and had not heard back as to whether or when this matter would be con- considered again. And and so I told them at the time I'd relay their concerns to the manager and that was pretty much the extent of our dialogue, but I just thought it prudent upfront to let the commission and the public know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Um yeah, I guess I have a question. I don't know if this is for Ms. Ray or for the rest of the staff, but um so, and I apologize if I missed this. Explanation, but this, it looks like the city is recommending that we deny both Vandelay and Oaks. Um is there concerns related to Oaks or is it just one application and we're being asked to consider the full application?
Ms. Ray or Director Knopki?
But Mayor Commissioners, this is for one amended plat as presented, and therefore the recommendation, my understanding is that it it has to apply to both.
So if they were to separate it, would it matter?
Mayor Commissioners, I would have to defer to Director Haugen on that point. I don't know if that's ever uh arisen before.
Director Haugen?
Uh Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I hate to keep tossing the ball this evening, but um I see um city attorney Jodens online and he perhaps can help us with that since I've never seen him either.
Attorney Jordan?
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, can you restate the question? I'm I'm not following.
Uh no, Commissioner O'Loughlin asked about the Oaks and Vandelay. And she was wondering whether it the denial was for both or uh and then I asked whether, and then we we heard yes, and then I asked whether if the, if it was separated, would it still be denied for Oaks?
Mayor Commissioners, I suppose that the commission can consider individual motions for each dedication of the right-of-way for Vandelay and and or Oaks.
And maybe just following up on ma- on Mayor, your question, is there concern from the city about the proposed right-of-way for Oaks or is the concern really uh on the the Vandelay component?
Mayor Commissioners. Uh Director Knopki, the dedication of the seventy-foot right-of-way for Oaks is no concern of the city. It matches um the other streets that are in the area. The primary concern is the connecting of Vandelay.
Thank you, Director. Any other comments or questions? Oh geez, go ahead, Commissioner Halliday.
Yes, maybe just going back to Ms. Ray's comment and and a little bit of my confusion with the Oaks versus Vandelay question. I mean, I thought the question was for us to accept the dedication as set forth on the amended plat. And I'm just curious if legally it's possible for us to s- accept a partial dedication on an amended plat. Um like what would be filed, what would be approved, would be like draw a little line across the Vandelay part? Um and I'm just trying to figure out if we have to take it as a package deal because we're looking at specifically an amended plat that was submitted by the applicant.
Mayor Commissioners, I would defer to City Attorney Joden on that point. Um it in in my mind, while I um I'm not an attorney from where I sit, uh what you're saying makes sense in in considering that the amended plat is also just for the establishment of these new lots, developable lots as well. It's not just the right-of-way as the whole amended plat.
Attorney Jordan?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, I think if the commission only wanted to accept one or the other uh right-of-way dedications, then the applicant would only be able to file a plat showing the the dedication of that right-of-way and the other one would need to be taken out. So a um a revised amended plat prepared for uh filing uh with the county survey committee and then ultimately for the city signature.
Okay, thanks. Um with with regard to um so maybe for Mr. Knopki, looking at the amended plat, the western portion of Vandelay appears to now have quite a bit that ranges from like sixty-five feet to I think eighty eighty feet, maybe back to sixty-five. And then it hits sort of the more constricted zone of fifty feet um for right-of-way until it terminates in Oaks. Am I, am I stating that right?
Uh Mayor Commissioners, yes, the western portion of this request shows um that dedication being varying from up to eighty feet in width and then the eastern portion um next down to the fifty-foot.
So from transportation's perspective, are there problems with the western portion that seems to exceed the sixty-foot?
As far as dedication or right-of-way? You know, that meets the uh um that's meets the our standards of sixty-foot or greater. Um as far as the eastern portion of fifty feet, no, it does not.
And so for the fifty-foot part, because I remember there was a whole bunch of discussion on um parking having to do with the western portion, expansion of the right-of-way to accommodate those parking spaces and whatnot of as of now, do you know whether parking is being proposed on the fifty-foot right-of-way portion at all?
Uh Mayor Commissioners, um as I see it, I, this is the dedication of right-of-way and the width of the right-of-way, but the design features that would fall underneath have not been proposed or approved or reviewed.
And so how how wide is the driving surface as proposed on the fifty-foot right-of-way?
Uh Mayor Commissioners, as it was proposed the last time, it was twenty feet of asphalt.
So I was looking at the Transportation Department's comments, and one is that all new roadways, private, local or minor collector must have a minimum thirty-two foot paved, thirty-six width from back curb um to back of curb. I- is the reason for that thirty-two because you're gonna have essentially two twelve-foot parking? I mean, six-foot parkings on each side and that'll create your your driving lane?
No, the reason for the um thirty-two feet of asphalt is ensure emergency access and clear and obstructed uh travel way for that emergency access.
And how many feet is that if we're planning parking on both sides of the street?
Uh parking currently, it would be twenty feet, but the additional width um on these d- design components um allows for, you know, a wider width for to accommodate the aerial units that would most likely be responding to any fire calls along this roadway, since they're multiple-story buildings and would require the aerial apparatus, which requires a minimum of twenty-six feet of width um to accommodate the outriggers.
So for the the cross-section, I think, that was shown and I asked about this last time uh with parking, right, the proposed sixty-foot, I think we only showed about an eighteen-foot unobstructed right-of-way. Am I viewing that right?
Uh Mayor Commissioners, the current uh local street section does include two nine-foot right-of-way or two trap nine-foot la- travel lanes. But as we're complying with um current fire code, um it's our recommendation to increase that to the ten-foot let lane, so would require or would enable to have that twenty-foot unobstructed width.
But that doesn't go up to twenty-six feet then?
But with our typical um section as outlined in engineering standards, we have the parking, which has six feet on each side, which allows for an additional twelve feet of width, thirty-two feet overall, which allows um apparatus to set up in key locations. You know, granted, there could be parking on that in those areas, but there's also um areas that would most likely have no parking and it would allow that apparatus to be set up and um attack the any emergency in those buildings.
Okay, but that would have to rely on some some gaps in the parking in that area if we had parallel parking down the whole block. And then maybe just the last question, and I'll let Commissioner Dean, is she's been waiting patiently. Um but subsection E notes that blocks may not exceed six hundred feet in length and that this is looks like it's greater than eight hundred feet long. I mean, is the recommendation that we just reject anything having to do with Vandelay? Because it it doesn't meet that engineering standard?
Um right now, the the request in front of us is the dedication of the right-of-way. And since the portion, the eastern portion of the right-of-way is only fifty feet, it does not meet that one aspect of engineering standards. So in that regards, um that entire section of Vandelay in our opinion is is not up to a city's engineering standards.
Right. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out is the is the six hundred foot piece, is that like a a make or break it? Because I I didn't remember if it was there last time and I apologize if I missed it, but it sort of doesn't seem to matter, right, if the thing was a hundred feet wide? Um is is the six hundred foot piece critical from transportation systems perspective? Because it sounds like the west was okay, the east wasn't, but then there's this issue of it being six hundred feet long. Anyway, I'm just trying to figure out which engineering objections are sort of germa- like really the vital ones that the city is saying, no, we can't take this. And which one of them, which ones of them seem like they're kind of tossed in there, if that makes sense?
Uh Mayor and Commission, I would say that any um aspects that do not meet the public safety standards as far as emergency access or in impedien- impedance to emergency services getting to um not only a fire but a medical um call, you know, those would be obviously the top priorities and um and we would prioritize from there.
Oh, okay, I'll go to come, but let me just follow up on Commissioner, you'll be, I'll be with you shortly. I, thank you. So what's the um what's the unobstructed driver's lane in connection to the emergency fire code? How many feet you looking at? If I'm right, our specs talk about what, twenty feet?
International Fire Code calls for twenty feet unobstructed uh emergency access. Uh with also an additional, if aerial units are gonna be used and um fire marshal or the fire chief would be better to explain the fire code, but um twenty-six feet is required for aerial operations.
But and I'm just trying to understand this, you know, I'm the, I don't understand this, so forgive me. But if we, if we, the city is saying this is what is our spec as in twenty feet, am I, am I right when when I say that?
Mayor, if I may, commission.
Is that, is that to answer my question, Madam Hollis Shaw?
Yes, it is.
Okay, please.
Yeah, so the recommendations in front of you from the team take into consideration not only the fire code, but also the engineering code. The application does not bifurcate the street. If the applicant had submitted the application and put in separation and we could go section by section to make the approvals happen, we would do that, but that is not how it was submitted. So we're responding to the application as submitted for the dedication and um the effort to uh pull parts and pieces out works. Um if the commission wants to file the plat inspections based on what meets the uh requirements of the city code specific to fire and police, the uh you know, fire and uh street activities. Any further analysis has been pretty significant by the team. We've worked as hard as we can to get to a space where we would be heard and this is what uh what has been resulted on the application. So I want to underscore that what you have been provided is uh not the maximum, it is the minimum expectation of the city code and the reasoning for the request in support of um, or the recommendation as has been supported by the team's analysis.
So.
Yes, the the fire code analysis says this does not meet the expectations of the fire code.
Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I I am a little bit confused. Um, I went back and we got, we received um, a a letter memo um, from Greg Worth on behalf of um, this project. And whenever we, since I've been on the commission, you know, whenever we're asked to consider some type of variance, for lack of a better term, to what our city standards are. You know, it, we normally are looking for a compelling reason to to allow that. Um, and I guess I have not, I have not been able to find um, within our materials or the response, like what that compelling reason is as to why um, we're, this this street is not at at sixty feet at the standard, um, instead at fifty feet in this um, on this part of Vandalay. Um, I know in the in the letter that we received, um, on the second page, it says that the varying right of way accommodates that site-specific needs for building development. Um, but I haven't been able to find, you know, why um, it is not being built uh, or being proposed to be built to our standard, so. And I'm hoping someone might be able to answer that question for me. Um, I know I have some pretty significant hesitation. Um, when we're being told that um, it cur- a a aerial fire truck could not respond to um, a a emergency adequately with what we've been given. Um, and so, you know, I'm looking for a compelling reason as to why, you know, this fifty feet should be, we should accept fifty feet.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have any other comments from the commission before I turn it over to the applicants? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments? Or hands raised from the applicants?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, I do have a hand raised. Uh, give the mic to Greg Worth.
You have the floor, Mr. Worth.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Greg Worth, W I R T H, with Staley Engineering at thirty-five thirty Centennial Drive. So the right-of-way dedications are for uh, Oak Street and Vandalay Avenue to facilitate the continued development at the Capit Hill Town Center. Um, commentary was provided on the September seventh commission meeting and a memo was provided to the commission on October thirteenth. For brevity, I'll provide some additional commentary. Um, Vandalay Avenue is proposed at fifty-foot minimum widths to avoid excess right-of-way and allow larger lot development areas. The larger lot areas allow for zoning and parking compliance while facilitating the maximal taxable advantages. Um, reviewing the complete street components, um, you know, two ten-foot travel lanes are provided, um, which is the twenty-foot wide unobstructed emergency access. Um, parking lanes are provided. A deviation request is to allow, provide perpendicular parking in lieu of the standard parallel parking. Um, the perpendicular parking creates the shared parking zone as identified in the engineering standards. As a recommended traffic calming measure, the shared parking spaces develops the neighborhood center with integrated parking and allows much more efficient spatial allocation and compliance with sound urban planning principles. Um, widened boulevards are provided where per- perpendicular parking does not occur. Um, sidewalks and curbs are provided. Um, with future right-of-way dedication, the right-of-way width for the majority of the Vandalay will likely exceed sixty feet. Um, the fifty feet is proposed because it provides the base section without the parking. Um, we fully intend to provide, you know, some integrated on-street parking in the future to the east. We just don't know exactly what those site-specific constraints are going to be, so we need flexibility in the future. Um, the proposed design is in direct response and aligned with the goals and objectives of the twenty nineteen urban growth policy, growth policy update and the Capitol Hill Mall Urban Renewal Plan, where the site is recommended as a neighborhood center to optimize reinvestment and become a non-standard development. This project is the reali- realization of the vetted and approved planning documents. The traffic calming measures are consistent with the approved planning documents to create a neighborhood center and establish a sense of place and encourage gathering. Um, there's been a consideration of street widths to promote and encourage non-motorized connectivity. Um, narrow streets are safer streets. Um, pedestrian survivability rates are ninety-five percent when cars are traveling at twenty-five miles an hour and ten percent when cars are traveling at forty-five, forty miles an hour. You know, wide streets facilitate higher higher speeds and are extremely dangerous and lethal for non-motorized users. Um, there's no intent to circumvent any regulations or compromise on public safety or emergency vehicle access. The design is to accommodate emergency vehicle access, which is an extremely remote likelihood occurrence and not diminish the everyday use. The rigid and overly strict interpretation of code is a regulatory barrier that will prohibit the development to the neighborhood center. Uh, reasonableness and professional judgment needs to be applied. The design accommodates frequent service vehicles and delivery vehicles. Um, there'll be garbage trucks that come in uh, you know, weekly and also um, service vehicles to um, you know, provide cleaning supplies. Um, the large unused streets will severely compromise the livability and sense of place for the desired neighborhood center. Um, the Capitol Hill Town Center will be the financial vehicle to facilitate the means for reinvestment within the urban renewable district. Um, specifically the Capitol Hill Town Center itself, you know, the property is just too valuable, um, to economically and practically create any type of affordable housing. Uh, however, you know, this project will provide the tax increment and financial means to renovate and expand the Stewart Homes project and, you know, further economic development within the district. Um, we request approval, um, and we request approval to construct the streets as proposed with the design elements as proposed and the acceptance of the street dedication of the seventy-foot for the Oak Street. And the minimum fifty-foot wide right-of-way for Vandalay with the understanding that the widening will be proposed when we know where all the perpendicular parking will occur. Um, I'm available for any other questions and Mr. Marcus Spond with D and M Development is also in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. Commissioner Dean, I know you had a question.
Okay, I'm I'm okay for.
Okay, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm really not sure whom to ask this question, but um, this uh, the the standard as it relates to the fire code is, I don't think anything particularly new. So how did, how did this get missed when it was originally brought to the city? I don't know exactly when that was. I think it was before my time, but it seems like seems like that should have been caught in the pre-app process or or something, but I guess I'm curious as to where it was missed.
Ma- Mr. Mayor, um, this is Sharon Helen. If if I am under um, understanding Commissioner Logan's question is when this, I I don't know if the question is specific to uh, this particular proposal, but or to the standards in general. But I'm going to assume he's talking about this proposal. Also went in front of city staff to speak about um, road whiffs and everything else. The initial, one of the initial proposals was they would dedicate Vandalay on the west side of Sanders and that the east side of Sanders would be a private street. Uh, city staff has maintained through pre-app, the pre-application process and throughout this process, that sixty foot is the right-of-way width for a local street, so that has been pretty consistent. And if you wa- wanted to go back to cities, um, city staff's memos or um, conversations, you'll find that to pretty much be that. I don't know if that was your question, Commissioner Logan, but that's how I interpreted the question.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask just a quick follow-up on, because I've sort of, I think I posed this question maybe in the first meeting we had on this, but I, this commission approved the other com- the other portion of Vandalay at fifty foot or maybe you can remind me when that portion got approved by the commission, along with Sanders?
Mayor Commission, that took place at the uh, January thirteenth, twenty twenty commission meeting.
Twenty twenty, okay, thanks. Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Logan, I I had a similar question because I I don't recall recall hearing um, these concerns during that um, during that process. So I don't know perhaps if something, you know, if there if there were changes in the standards or just in in light of approval of that, i- if if the staff had sort of a a differing um, recommendation.
Director Knopki or Ms. Ray?
I can also.
Director Hogan?
Rachel here too, if you.
Uh, Mayor Commission, um, the previous uh, dedication of right-of-way for the western portion of Vandalay and the dedication of Sanders, um, there were um, a lot of discussion over the concerns of the twenty-foot or the the twenty-foot of asphalt and the uh, basic came down to that short section of Vandalay would be the only section because the other half of the development was going to be um, kind of a uh, a lot onto itself and there would be no right-of-way through it. And so that was um, with concern still. Which I believe is noted in the uh, uh, commission meeting minutes that um, um, we had concerns over with, but um, with the um, dedic- or the kind of assurance, I guess, that the lot ladder half would be just a a private lot. Um, I believe that maybe that was the reason why it was um, approved as such.
Mayor, if I may, as I understand it, the original design and what is actually being implemented are two different things. Unfortunately, I think that's the the great part of uh, Montana's development standards and also the difficulty. And that at grand, um, in a grand scheme, it offers to the private property owner that as much variation as they wish, as they choose in their development. And at the same time, uh, we offer as many uh, flexibility uh, opportunities as possible and as things begin to actually be constructed and what's actually implemented is something different. So I bet part of the conversation that is different to today's conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Can I ask a question? I think since Director Knopki had mentioned this in his um, opening remarks, um, I think he might be the best to answer it. Um, I don't know if we have the Assistant Chief or Acting Chief on tonight, but you mentioned um, that because of the type of development that is proposed to be occurring on this part of Vandalay that an aerial apparatus would be required in order to respond. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, the way that I understood is that if you, if we are needing to use the the aerial apparatus, there needs to be twenty-six feet of surface um, in order to to meet those standards. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I will not say that I know the code or the fire code um, precisely, but um, my discussions with the fire marshal um, are that anything that has three stories or more, that the ladder truck or aerial apparatus would be um, responding to that um, incident and that um, the manufacturer's uh, recommendation is twenty-six feet to put the outriggers out um, um, to their, to maximize the ladder. Um, they can be short-sticked or short, um, but I would have to refer that to the fire chief or fire marshal to um, give you those dimensions or um, how that can occur.
Okay, and I guess, um, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Director Knopki. A follow-up I would have, I think, probably for the applicant is if, you know, what would your response be and and do you anticipate any development or, you know, three stories or higher? Um, because we obviously have to be planning for the future here. Um, and I'm quite concerned if we are not, um, I surely don't feel comfortable uh, making exceptions when it comes to fire safety, but, you know, curious if you have a response.
Mr. Worth, go ahead. You have the floor, Mr. Worth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if, you know, wider widths are needed, um, the proposed Vandalay will basically satisfy the exact same intent as the city standard with parallel parking, where you rely on gaps to get the wider width. You know, in this case, we would have gaps for, um, you know, there's some ADA parking spaces, so there would be ADA access aisles. So, um, you know, those are gaps. There's, you know, other gaps where um, you would have a space available, availability to have a wider than the twenty-foot obstructed width to to allow the outrigger placement.
Any other comments from the commission?
Maybe just a question on the outrigger piece, um, you know, obviously site plans change, but we've seen draft site plans during this process, many of which seem to show buildings that don't necessarily um, have direct frontage. Um, I have significant portions of the building that are kind of floating in the middle of a parking lot in the middle of the um, the parcel. So what what do we do with the outrigger if we bring it in, say, on Eleventh? Or some other wide street, but it just can't reach um, the buildings there?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Is that a question for uh, Mr. Worth or for the city?
City.
I think that's, I think that's for the city because we've had a lot of talk about the outrigger and the need for the twenty-six feet. Um, you know, what do we do if we create this twenty-six feet? The building is stuck thirty feet back from that street. Um, so we created this sort of extra wide street so that this outrigger can be on there, but how does the outrigger get to the building at that point?
So, uh, thank you, Commissioner Halliday. I think a good example of what can happen with when widths are restricted um, is shown as an entrance on um, and through San- Sanders. We have video that shows the difficulty with those smaller and shorter widths of our larger fire trucks already. So that beginning with the entrance, we already have a struggle getting into the site from from Sanders. Now, going west on um, off of the the highway at a fairly significant speed. So now, coming into this conversation, the question actually was asked and the point was made by Mr. Worth on site that we could just put them on the state highway on Eleventh and just put a fire out that way. Um, the fire code is written and the ex- minimum expectations cited are based on the expectations of what potentially could be done. So we provided at the very beginning a very broad conversation and then uh, those dedications, because again, the city um, and and the state allow for development and development to occur on private property as it needs to to organically happen. We allow that to happen in a way that that sets the minimum expectations in alignment with the city code. We would not rely on a state highway, especially for an area that is anticipated to have some sort of surgical location or potential emergency response beyond just having what could be um, what's there the, currently the the retail. So uh, that is the expectation of the fire codes review. Um, I I appreciate the point around our professional judgment, that is that Mr. Worth has pointed to, our professional judgment, it is implied and in the expectation of the team is that they provide that expertise as the city code and the fire code outlines and and the commission can can decide a lot of different ways. They could, you all could choose not to accept the right-of-way. You could um, and Accept the right of way, you could, and suggest that it go back to being a private road. You could entertain the motion and accept the right of way. Those are all, all realities. And as I believe. City Attorney Joden has shared, we could also note those bifurcations as you would like. But ultimately. The, the question over whether or not. We agree is, is obvious that we don't with the applicant on the safety. And that's based on our expertise, which you've hired us to, to provide to you.
So maybe a, a question for the city attorney and for. Or while city attorney, Mister Knopki, Ms. Hogan. The manager brought up private roads. I remember the green metro development was the last notable one. Right, clearly not built in any way that was going to accommodate. Any of the things we're talking about tonight. And nothing was said. By the fire department, concerns were raised by streets back then. It was just sort of left to be a, a wild west. Is the city's position, let's say the, let's say we reject this tonight and the applicant goes home and does exactly what they originally said they were going to do a year ago. Convert Vandalay into a private drive. Is there anything that we can do as a city at that point if they build a fifteen foot wide alley, a ten foot wide alley? To ensure proper fire access into there or proper emergency vehicle access, or if we say no and they go private drive. Are we just hamstrung with whatever they give us? Do we have any regulatory authority, Ms. Howden?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, the, the fire code still applies, so there will always need to be. A twenty foot wide all weather access. So my understanding is Happy Homes does have that. Currently, although I think some of the parking issues out there, depending on the time of day, raise that concern whether that is in fact. Unobstructed twenty feet at all times. I would also point out that city code requires right of way access to all new lots. And my understanding is that the applicants are. Consolidating and rearranging a number of lots into six bigger new lots. With this amended plat. And my understanding is those lots need right of way access. It couldn't just rely on. A private drive to access those lots.
But I guess I just go back to that question. Can we actually regulate the sidewalks, boulevards? Other than the twenty foot, if that, if we have the ability to tell someone to drive this to be twenty feet wide. Can we do anything else to make this an actual street? If they go private and they can play with their lots and have them touch Eleventh Avenue or Prospect or Oaks.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Halliday, no. You know, I know we've struggled with this issue in the past as to whether the complete streets policy and other design. Requirements of engineering standards. Apply to private drives and it's, it's my view that they do not. And the only way we can mandate them is by requiring public right of way. And in addition, even if we could, I don't think we have the enforcement mechanism, the enforcement authority. To regulate and enforce parking. Require snow removal off of sidewalks that are on private drives.
Go ahead, Commissioner Loughlin.
Thanks, Mayor. So this question is perhaps for Mister Worth and I'll also note that Mister Espinosa has his hand raised too, so. Whoever is best to answer this. I. I, I just have a couple of questions and I think this is related to the packet. Of information that was shared, was emailed to the mayor and commission email address. So in relation to Vandalay, it looks like the design is, it jogs a little bit north. Can you share a little bit about why that is?
Mister Worth and Mister Espinoza?
Yes, the reason for the jog of Vandalay is to facilitate a proposed building and the irregular shape of the building. So that's, you know. A lot of the building size and, and the parking that's going to be proposed in one of the buildings. It necessitates the need for shifting Vandalay to, to accommodate a, a building, the site specific features.
And is that to accommodate building A or to accommodate benefits?
That will be to accommodate building A primarily, but it also benefits benefits in that, you know, they, they're looking to. You know, maximize their building size while also, you know, providing their code compliant parking on the benefits. So by shifting the road north, it makes their lot larger.
So that kind of goes to my next question. Could you remind me, one, how, how many parking spot? It does look like a significant amount of parking. And then how many floors is benefits expected to? That, that building is expected to be?
Three.
Benefits is the last I've heard is they're potentially going to propose four floors. Because it will suit the building A, which is, you know, proposed as. Five floors and then also Opportunity Bank would be three floors. So benefits, you know, just the. You know, physical stature, don't want to have a diminished building. In the area since also the Jorgensen is another multi-level structure. So it would provide the right scale of a building. They're looking at stacking alternatives, see how their floors fit, but you know, they recognize the need that. A larger, you know, multi, you know, four, four story building is more beneficial. In this location, especially when you consider the grade difference on eleventh avenue that essentially the first floor is going to be hidden from view. So. From eleventh avenue, it's going to appear as a three story building when it's actually a four story building because eleventh avenue is, you know, ten feet higher than the building site.
Okay. And then I, I guess I just had one question. Director Knopki's answer to my and Commissioner Logan's. Questions were helpful, jogged my memory a little bit. And I'm just curious, can you, can you actually respond to? Sort of what we had in front of us in twenty twenty and what you were envisioning for these particular lots? At that time, had, had you planned on running Vandalay through to, to, to Oaks at that point? Or have things changed?
Things have changed. You know, initially when we were looking at Vandalay to the west. Building A was the only thing that was really committed on the site at that point. And actually, building A was in a different location. It would have been where Opportunity Bank was proposed. So. A year ago. We did not know what was going to happen between Sanders and Oak Street. Outside of one building.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A question, I think for Mister Worth. So I guess is benefits opposed to? Say an extra six feet on Vandalay? And you mentioned. Earlier and then in the letter that it's to, you know, accommodate. Better development, but is, is it benefits that's opposed?
Benefits has concerns. They recognize the need for the flexibility to have the fifty foot right of way. For two reasons. One is to maximize their parking. They're looking at maximizing the size of the building. And then of course, if you max. You know, the parking is all based on square footage. So if you make the building bigger, you have to make the parking bigger. And they just know from past experience with their other facilities that they need a certain amount of parking. So they. With their employees and patient parking, they know that there were right about two hundred spaces with what space, the size of the building they have. And that's really what they're looking for. So. You know, if we don't have the on-street parking, we have a really hard time needing that. Parking number count that they're, that they need for their building. So they recognize the need for the perpendicular parking here, the shared parking zone, you know, here to create Vandalay and the town center type feel. The other issue is they were looking at, you know, possibly a rotation orientation on the building for aesthetics. With some of the, the proposed overlay. There was a potential setback with the overlay district. That isn't with the current base district B two right now. There is a zero lot line setback. So. You know, the building would be consistent with the B two zoning, but if they're, if they don't apply for a building, if they apply for a building permit after any type of. Overlay zoning is enacted, then they potentially would have to apply for a variance for a building setback requirement. Or alternate building, you know, change to, change the design to meet the new code, new setback requirements.
So yes, Mister Mayor, a follow up. I guess is there? What is the opposition then to adding? That extra fee on the north side of Vandalay across from benefits?
Commissioner Deed, was that a question directed at me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. The opposition right now is, we don't know what tenant is going to go on that. Pad and we would also like to introduce the perpendicular parking on that side as well too. So. As you can see, the, the intent with the fifty feet is to give the base. You know, street structure with the twenty foot unobstructed width, the seven foot boulevards. And also the five foot sidewalks. But as we move forward, we'd like to integrate more of the perpendicular parking, you know, so it creates the. You know, irregularity, continuity. Irregularity and also, you know, so all the shared parking isn't only on one side. So. I anticipate that we will be having shared parking on the north side, north of benefits.
Mister Mayor, can I ask a question to Director Knopki then?
Please.
So Director Knopki, if, if they added the perpendicular parking. Similar to, that you can see earlier on the west. I guess west of benefits on Vandalay where it is. Includes a sixty five foot right of way. That would be in compliance, correct?
Mayor Commissioners, so. You know, the, the discussion is about right of way width. And these design elements have not been. Are typically not brought into the conversation this early. But as far as talking about parking. Parking is problematic. For, for maintenance purposes. So by adding the, the shared use parking, we're now taking away the boulevard that would be there. For the snowplows for snow storage. So as a snowplow goes through there. If you were to have both perpendicular parking. You would have a berm at the, basically the interface of the road and the parking area. And if, if you look at the, the plan that was submitted last time, they had some of these design elements with the number of. Approaches for each of these different buildings and then the perpendicular parking, you're going to have. Very limited snow storage as far, you know, you may have a boulevard that's at the back or the front, however you want to look at it. Of the parking area. But typically those perpendicular parking areas are very difficult to plow. If one vehicle is in the middle of, you know, say a, a six spot parking area, we're not, we can't get in there with our snowplows. We typically in, as part of our snow plan, do not plow those parking areas because. Of all the liability issues with the parked cars and then pushing snow typically on some of those. A lot in the, have curb side sidewalks, so you still have a snow berm. And in those, you know. Normal years of Montana weather, we're going to have snow piling up and it's just becomes problematic.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may also suggest that Director Hogan might have a moment also to reflect on the parking. And, and the element, that parking element in acceptance of right of ways, that traditionally a part of acceptance of right of way, I guess. That design element becomes a really difficult conversation and something that. If the commission would like to in the future on all right of ways, be consistent in assurance. That we have access to and, and understanding of design elements. When we accept rights of way, I think it's a good opportunity for us to be. Be consistent and start a, and establish a standard if that is the expectation. But then we also know that we need to hold them accountable to hitting those expectations. Otherwise, we run into a situation where we have locations that we can't gain access to and they're public streets. I just want to. Understand, Director Hogan, how, how that plays out in, in the parking in particular.
Mister Mayor Commissioners. A couple of things. First of all, it is my understanding. That it takes a separate action in the city commission to allow for perpendicular parking or anything other than parallel parking. And. After I get done, you can confirm that with Director Knopki. Secondly. Generally speaking, when the commission is brought an amended plat, the amended plat. In and of itself only establishes the right of way width. Generally, what happens is that once the right of way width is established. That people design to their right of way width. Now. We can talk about the design elements with this right of way. But we have not had formal billing permits except for, I believe, building A maybe. Submitted for the billing permit process. During part of that billing permit process, we do review it for parking. We also have discussions with the applicant about alternatives for parking. That are in our parking ordinance such as reductions for. Electric cars, reductions for bike racks. Our transit stop, several things. So that generally, I guess my point is that's generally where the parking. Is taken as part of the discussion when we're sitting down with the applicant. And staff does that quite often, especially on larger buildings. Has what similar pre-app with the designers of the building. And speak to what are the parking requirements? What are some of your alternatives? So when the staff brought this forward with regard to the right of way, it is just intended to. The commission to act on the right of way width as they have in past amended plots. And we have plenty of examples of that. The additional request for perpendicular parking would have to be brought from the commission. To allow for that. And if they're going to use that as part of. Their design to meet their parking requirements, that. Permission would have to be granted by the commission. Before we could even issue that building permit because that's the one we do would meet the parking requirement. I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner Loughlin or. City manager, but. I believe that was the essence of your question.
Any other comments?
Perhaps Director Knopki can speak to perpendicular versus parallel parking. In process.
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Hogan is correct. I don't have the city code exactly in front of me, but any angle parking. On a city street has to be brought before the commission or commission approval. That's. Why you see our, our typical sections in our engineering standards showing parallel parking as that's the approved parking concept. In the engineering standards and anything that deviates from that is a, a commission action.
And final comments? And we'll go to. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, did you want to take public comment?
I thought we did, but do you have hands raised?
I do have two hands raised.
Okay, we will entertain those comments and then move forward. My apologies.
First up, I have Tyler Emmer.
You have the floor, Mr. Emmer.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Tyler Emmer with Opportunity Bank. I'm our market president here in Helena. We're a Montana bank. We have roughly three hundred and eighty-five employees now. Twenty-six buildings, twenty-three branches spread across Montana, three. Operation centers. We are interested in building an operations center. These parcels. Our corporate headquarters is in Helena. Roughly a third of our employees are in Helena. We're looking to construct an operations center that will regularly bring employees to Helena for training. Looking to continue our relationship with the community. Hopefully do things the right way. Not looking to do anything outside the norm. Other than be a good community partner. Uh, not looking to do anything outside the norm, other than be a good community partner. Um, I do have to briefly touch on the benefits of narrow roads. Uh, in between soccer games this weekend, I did go to Starbucks, so I turned off of Prospect onto Sanders. I do drive a truck, uh, which is bigger than I need, but in order to get onto Sanders, I had to slow down. And then in order to turn off of Sanders onto Vandalay, I really had to slow down. In order to get into the Starbucks parking lot, I had to slow down. And as I brought home my crate of, uh, pumpkin spice lattes to the whole crew, um, I appreciate the benefits of a narrower road and driving slower. I do admit I'm regularly in the minority on this in Helena. I like narrow roads. Um, it seems as though some of my friends like really wide roads and higher speeds. I like narrower roads and slower speeds. Uh, obviously, we're looking for the benefits of a training center within walking distance of our corporate headquarters, uh, roughly a block away, um, and do support narrower roads and slower speeds. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Emmer. Who do we have next?
Mr. Mayor, I have Marcus Sponda.
You have the floor, Mr. Sponda.
Good eveners, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, thanks for taking the time to, to listen to my comments. You know, I, I, I say that I respect the city staff's point of view and, um, the city manager's point of view, although I, I think we disagree on those points of view. Um, you know, they, they have merit in, in what they see and want done. Um, I just wanna first talk about the background briefly and how we've even gotten to this point. You know, this project was originally proposed as a development that had all private streets. We were invited to admin meetings and various other meetings with the former city manager, and were asked if we would put Sanders and Oak Street back through as public streets. We agreed that we would do that if we could design them as narrower streets, and we could have Vandalay at that point in the west, um, be a public city street as well, because we didn't wanna mix private and public streets at that point. Now, of course, the development has changed over the past year and a half, two years. Um, you know, we actually had some meetings with a design firm that was, uh, back then, um, working on a contract with the city of Helena to be, become an outside development partner or development department for the city, who actually helped us design some of our elements within this. So we, we did take what the city, the former city manager wanted, and, and really did change our design, or our entire plan changed based on that. You know, the other, the other thing that keeps coming up is that these narrower streets don't meet code or don't meet fire access. And I guess somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but all of our streets with a twenty-foot unobstructed drive aisle meet emergency access. All of our turning radiuses meet code. So we keep, I keep hearing that these streets are not safe, and they don't meet these different elements, but they do. Um, you know, we talk about the twenty-six-foot wide street needed for the outriggers on the fire, fire truck. We've been told by the fire marshal that he will not fight a fire from Sanders Street or Vandalay Street, that we would have to have access in our parking lots to fight the fires. So I don't know why we're talking about twenty-six-feet-wide streets needed on Vandalay and Sanders, because we've been told the city will not fight a fire from those streets. In fact, they're holding up occupancy on the Starbucks building, because they say they can't fight a fire from Sanders or Vandalay, and they have some issues with the internal parking lot.
Occupancy from Starbucks?
Or, I'm sorry, Taco Bell, excuse me.
Oh.
Occupancy from Taco Bell. Um, so I guess, you know, just, uh, kinda back up as to why we want narrower streets. I think it's been mentioned many times. It slows people down. We don't want parking, parallel parking on the street. You know, if you have a thirty-six-foot wide street, and you have two people parked on the side of it, and they both open their door, you have fourteen feet right there. You can't drive two cars down that street at the same time. You either have to stop, you tear their door off, or you, you know, hit the person getting out of their car. So we don't want a residential street in the middle of a commercial development. Um, so I guess that's, that's my comments, and I appreciate all of your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sponda. Uh, I gotta find her now, because I just heard Mr. Sponda saying all those things, what they have meet code. I- is he right, bro?
Mayor, if I may.
Help me out here. Uh.
Mayor, if I may, thank you. This is Rachel, the, uh, city manager. I, I appreciate the comments from Mr. Sponda. I've had many conversations with Mr. Sponda. Um, he's also shared that the Commission had already previously agreed to this design, so I, I understand the frustration he must have with where he's coming from in having to manage with a new city manager. I understand that. I also understand that what was there is, was not what was, what is there now, it's not what was contemplated. And, uh, no, it does not meet the expectations of the code. That is why you hire the experts to evaluate it. They have said they do not, and, um, private streets, I, I recognize and hear that that was the expectation. Now, it being dedicated is right-of-way, so, um, the difficulty is that I'm being asked to recommend oftentimes, um, in this project to you all, that we not follow the expectations of the code because of all the previous conversations, and I, I have to tell you, it is very difficult for me to ignore the expectations of the city code, especially when the staff have shared to me as our experts that it's unsafe. So that is certainly, though, the prerogative of the Commission. You can certainly, um, move in another direction and vote differently. I would share that, uh, when the Commission makes a, uh, determination and approves uh, the acceptance of right-of-way outside what is recommended, that it sets precedent, and it also changes the conversation on the site, so it, it can expedite the next moves. Um, that's fine. You all have, um, that authority. Thank you.
Do we have any fire, do we have the fire marshal here, or fire chief, or whichever?
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, fire chief and the mayor, uh, the commission, uh, the, uh, the interim fire chief and the, uh, fire marshal are not here. Again, I'm sharing to you, they have already shared twice that they are, they have evaluated the site, and it does not meet the fire code.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Um, just, I'm throwing this out there. It appears, uh, so we wouldn't necessarily be meeting the complete streets of sixty feet um, by just adding the six-foot lane, but it would accommodate then the aerial fire apparatus as described. Is there any interest from the applicant in, you know, meeting that fire requirement? Because I, I mean, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to, you know, the frustrations that there's appears to have been, you know, some sort of alternative agreement that was discussed with the previous city manager in, in previous years. Um, but I also don't feel comfortable, you know, voting for something that, you know, we're being told does not meet the fire code, especially if you have a four-story, you know, surgery center, um, medical center. Um, and, and I am trying to reconcile those two things. Um, and so I'm curious if there is, you know, willingness to to help us get to a place where we are, we are meeting the public safety standards, um, while also, you know, helping move a, I think, a positive thing for this area forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Was that, was that a question to Mr. Sponda and, and/or Mr. Worth?
Uh, yes.
Um, Madam Clerk, are they still on? Okay, you have the floor, Mr. Sponda.
Um, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so we have had some discussions, um, with the fire chief and, um, just kinda briefly with the city manager about Sanders Street, and um, there is, so there's a median on the south side of Sanders Street. Um, and that, that basically makes it so there's a, a ten-foot drive aisle, a median, and another ten-foot drive aisle. Um, the fire marshal has indicated to me that if we were willing to either fill that median in with concrete, remove the median altogether, or, um, you know, have parts of that possibly with concrete and have, still have some vegetation in there, that they could use their outriggers on that, which we're fine with. I mean, if, if the fire um, fire marshal wants us to remove that median, I think that's totally reasonable. I mean, I, I guess that's city right-of-way right now, so I don't know that we can make that decision. I, I, I guess I don't know, maybe that's a question for the city, if the city is, is willing to do it since that street's already done and been adopted, but, you know, we have no problem with that. Um, my understanding is also that, again, the fire marshal has indicated that he, he's not going to fight a fire from Sanders Street or Vandalay Street, that they would fight the fire from internal parking lots. Um, you know, if you look at the layout of the Benefice parking lot, um, that building, you know, they can't, they can't fight a fire from any of the city streets anyways. They're gonna have to fight the fires from the parking lot, which is closer into the building, so, um, I guess the, the easy answer is yes, we would be willing to work with the fire, fire marshal, and making sure that he has proper access it, um, to fight the fire, and, and we would have to have that to get a building permit anyway, so.
So, uh, Madam, uh, Manager, how do you answer that?
I thought the difficulty is that that's not the conversation we're having. This is about the right-of-way dedication. And I'm certainly happy to have the, the larger conversations around improvements on the city streets. I had shared to, uh, Mr. Sponda, interest in, uh, if he would meet the expectations, making, uh, city investment and bringing back to the Commission improvements that would meet the expectations of city code. Those were not, and this is the road we have come down, so um, I'm more than happy to continue to have those conversations and how we can improve these, the, uh, location. But, um, I, I understand that the ultimate uh, difficulty is really around what was originally agreed to. And, um, those were conversations, there's nothing written down or, or parts and pieces agreed to, so those, that's why it's important that the Commission, who, as I understand, were part of those conversations, were, are a part of this one as well, in that they, um, that you all have the opportunity to decide how you'd like to move forward with this right-of-way dedication.
Madam Manager, uh, we've been discussing here today, a lot of our discussion has been focused on fire codes and all of that, and I'm not happy that the fire marshal is not present and/or the fire chief is not present to answer some of these questions, because it will help some of us make a more reasonable dis- uh, uh, decision on what's going on, and all night, we've been talking about fire, 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 and they're not present to answer these questions.
Mayor, if I may, uh, the city commission, overall, the expectation and analysis of all of the, all of the applications that come in front of you is done. They have weighed in. They have provided, in the last meeting and in this one, I recognize you are not happy. At the same time, they have not dropped the ball. They have provided to you the expectations and information. They have done so from the beginning. The property owners cho- have chosen not to, and again, that seems reasonable based on that it was originally designed to be a private road. So, um, thank you. I, I, your concerns for sure are noted, and I appreciate them. Thank you.
You have the floor, Commissioner Halliday.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I guess first, a question for, and I'm sorry, I gotta ask a question about fire. Um, you know, Mr. Sponda had said to us multiple times now in response to Commissioner Dean's question in, in public comments, that the city has made representations during the development process, and including issues with, I guess, Taco Bell now, that I'm hearing about for the first time, right, that we're not going to be doing aerial apparatus on Sanders and Vandalay. Is that, is he lying to us? Is, is he just making that up tonight?
If I may, no, uh, uh, Mayor, that, that is correct. When we do an analysis of, of right-of-way dedication, we have to look at the property in which and from which we're responding. Utilizing the state highway is not the place from which we would use and depend on. We've already went through that conversation with Mr. Sponda, and it was taken into consideration in the review of this application.
O- okay, but he's, he's specifically said Vandalay, right, which is the subject of this discussion, which has needed to be anywhere as wide from eighteen feet in our engineering standards to twenty feet apparently under the fire code, to twenty-six feet when the aerial is brought in to, I, I don't know, right? Like, I keep getting told the fire code is being violated. I've read the, the staff comments, um, a few times now, and I can't actually find the part of it where the fire department expressly says, this is a problem. They have a lot of things they've said. We need this, we wanna see this. Um, Transportation's done a great job of articulating all of the problems that it sees. The fire department seems to follow up on Transportation. I'm just trying to get a gauge. Mr. Sponda says, y'all have told us, we, the five of us, apparently, as, as agent of the city, have told them that we're not gonna fight fires from Vandalay, so the twenty-six-foot aerial discussion, it would be out. And I'm just trying to figure out then, like, are we just discussing making the street six feet wider for the sake of making it six feet wider? Um, like, what is going on? That's what I'm just trying to figure out. What is the fire code being violated? And is, is, is he lying to us? That's the second question I asked before that I just haven't heard an answer to. He said, we said no Vandalay. Um, is that a representation we've made?
So, uh, I did not, uh, ignore your, your, I said that we agreed that that is not where we would fight fires from. We would not fight fires from the state highway. That is
Vandalay is not a state
Vandalay, or Vandalay. Correct, we would not. So the, the second part of the question is whether or not we know exactly what's being constructed there. No. No, as we, as we shared tonight, anything above three feet, he would use that outrigger. We've heard it's gonna go up to four feet.
So then the second part of the question, other than the code portion that the fire department cites, which is basically the streets engineering piece, which specific provision of the fire code is being violated? Because I've heard it said a lot, and I just couldn't find it in the memo. I apologize if I've, if I've missed it.
Sure. I have that. I, it's been provided to the applicant several times, and, uh, if you would like to, I think there was, I will pull that code section, so hopefully. And Mayor, I can also send it out after this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, the manager already covered. I was just gonna say, oftentimes, most of the time when the city is accepting right-of-way, we don't know what the design is, because we don't know what's going to be built on the property. The building permit dictates the fire code and the access to and around the building, and we often don't know that when right-of-way is dedicated. That's why we have standards that take into account all of the potential aspects of it, and then once they apply for a building permit, the fire department and the building division review those building permits, and then and then we design the road within the right-of-way that has been dedicated.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Halliday, is your hand up or you're done?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just wanted to make sure, I, like, I'm just curious about the code revision, but if we're not gonna get that tonight, um, that's fine.
Okay. Any final comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. I'm just, um, as I, as I consider this dedication of the right-of-way, um, I mean, I've heard from staff from various directions that, that, that it does not meet a significant public safety code, so I'm gonna have a hard time supporting it. So, just wanted that to be clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I guess, I, I'm a little bit confused of what the answer was at the beginning of this conversation, and maybe Thomas can give me the right direction. Is it possible for us to move to approve Oaks only tonight?
I don't think so.
No, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean.
The, the application is together. Go ahead, Commi- uh, Mr. Jordan, I apologize.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Collins, I apologize for interrupting. Um, Commissioner Dean, uh, I, it's possible. I mean, it's the commission's decision. Uh, the mayor makes a good point that that the applicant has asked for both Vandelay and Oaks to be uh, accepted as public right-of-way, but it's up to the commission to decide which, which to accept, either none, both. I think if, if the commission does not accept Vandelay tonight, then we're potentially still gonna have to have this discussion at some point uh, because my understanding is right-of-way is needed to access these six new redesigned lots.
Okay. Thanks to everyone. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will just preface my motion with, um, I really wish that I was not making this motion, but I think that it's just where we are right now because I, I do not feel comfortable um, you know, uh, approving a dedication of a street that we, we can't confirm will be safe for folks, um, for fire safety, and I hope that um, you know, we can find some sort of resolution in this soon, um, but I, I just certainly don't feel comfortable um, moving forward with a project that we don't that would, that will not meet, um, the standards that, that we need to keep people safe, so. Um, with that, I would, uh, well, I guess first, before I move, City Attorney Jordan, can we table this or do, does it need to be denied?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, that's commission discretion.
So I guess I would, uh, because I am in favor of Oaks, but I'm, I am not in favor of Vandelay as it's proposed right now, so I guess I would move to table the dedication of Vandelay Avenue right-of-way and Oak Street right-of-way for property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue, and east of North Sanders Street in the city of Helena, Montana, and ask city staff to continue to work with the developer in finding a resolution.
Do you have your hand up for a second? I, I see a hand, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Lachlan?
Oh, sorry, I, um, I think Commissioner Logan was gonna second it, and I have a question if, if that, i- if he was intending to second it.
I did.
Okay. So Mayor, just a quick process question, um. I'm just wondering, so we have already tabled this once, um, with, I, I think kind of a, a, a quick statement by the, the city that they wanted to look at sort of the revised proposal. I, I'm, I'm, what happens if we, if we table it? Uh, you know, I'm wondering if the denial actually starts the process again of, of reapplying for either only Oaks or a redesign or whatever. If we table this, are we then, you know, bringing back this same proposal?
I mean, I, I've just weighing in on that. I, we've done this once already. It's pretty clear tonight that um, the five of us seem uncomfortable reaching some point and we're somewhat punting on a tabling. Um, I, I say we voted up, we voted down. Sounds like probably down. And, you know, that will send the message then that they're going to need to come back with something else. Um, but I, I think we owe it at this point to take a position. It's dragging everyone around. You can just tell by the disposition of these discussions um, that these are not two parties that are enjoying um, these discussions, so I, I'd be more in favor of a um, outright decision, one way or the other, on this process this evening, and this commission may or may not see it again at some point down the road.
I mean, so we can take a vote on the motion to table. I will be a no on tabling it today, and I, I, you know, and, and then we can take a further motion if we'd like. I mean, if there's three that would like to table it and we can bring back this same proposal at a later date, that, that's up to you all.
Commissioner Dean, what say you?
Well, I'm, I don't, I would not want to see the same proposal back, which is why I prefaced, you know, finding a resolution. Um, so if that means denying, fine, but I, I, I mean, the city attorney said that we will see this again, um, since the plan is, is different than, um, than was originally discussed with these, um, lots being divided up, um, and will need right-of-way access, so either way, it will be coming back to the commission in some form. Um, I mean, I'd like to see if us find some sort of common ground, um, because I think this is a, a good project. Um, but I also wanna make sure that we're, you know, living up to the responsibilities of public safety.
So. Uh, did you pull your, um, did you pull your, uh, your table?
I didn't, but I mean, I, i- if, if, I, I prefer maybe we just take a vote on the tabling and then some, we can make another motion to deny if that fails.
Okay. Madam Clerk has been moved and seconded. Would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
No.
Mayor Collins.
Let's take a vote on the whole issue and move forward.
So is, is that a no on the table?
I said no.
The motion fails three to two.
So. I'll take a motion.
So Mayor, I'm happy to make, well, not happy to make this. I think, uh, we're all sort of in similar circumstances, but um, let me find it real fast. Um, so I, I will, I will move to deny the dedication of Vandelay Avenue right-of-way and Oak Street right-of-way for property generally located south of Prospect Avenue, north of Eleventh Avenue and east of North Sanders Street in the city of Helena.
Second.
Uh, uh, can, can you repeat that, please, Commissioner Lachlan?
Yeah, no problem. So I'm moving to deny this current application as it stands right now.
Okay. Any final comments?
Yeah, Mayor, i- if I can make a comment, I mean, I, um, I see that the city manager has now posted something in the, in the chat box. I, I think that, uh, we will likely see something, um, come back up. It, it would be nice to just get all of the information in advance of the meeting and um, given just a lot of the conversations around fire, I think that would be helpful to have maybe a little bit more information. Um, I, I also, I mean, I, I appreciate Mr. Emmert's comments about, um, sort of the design of, of Sanders, and I've talked to the city manager about this. I mean, I, I definitely appreciate that it sort of forces people to slow down, and I recognize the work that the developer is doing in, in sort of rethinking, right? Like, we established a, a urban renewal district, not just for this area, but for all of sort of Eleventh and Prospect to the interstate with the idea of sort of rethinking what this space looks like, right? So, I'd love to keep an open mind. Um, I ha- I have concerns about the perpendicular parking. Um, I think given a four, four-story, um, building that's being put in, um, the number of cars and vehicular traffic that, that may be going, I think um, it, it would be worthwhile to pause and sort of give some more opportunity to rethink and redesign this street. Um, I'm open to, um, you know, wh- what this could look like in order to slow traffic down, um, and I hope that um, the applicant is able to work with the city, um, to find a solution, but I think given sort of the concerns we're hearing, you know, I, I have to vote to deny today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Ma- Mr. Mayor, maybe just a comment for myself.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, for eight years now, right, I've tried to fight battles on complete streets in this city and watched us at times do things like, you know, uh, Happy Homes, where we just completely blew it, um, from an internal standpoint. Um, trying to figure out how we went development to standards. And, you know, this is one where you look at it, and the real objection here is, is street standards. Um, are there fire angle issues? Absolutely. Welcome to the south central of Helena. Um, but if you look at section five oh three, and I appreciate the manager getting that one up there for us, I wish we had had it sooner. You know, all that talks about is the twenty-foot unabstracted access. Um, maybe there's something else in there, but, um, right, we don't, we don't have a violation of the fire code in front of us tonight. It hasn't been articulated, and it's unfortunate the Fire Department's not here. So what we're talking about is a single street in a planned development, right, that's economic development for the city of Helena and a good goal. And we have gotten frozen up over just the eastern portion of a roadway. Um, I, it was, it's a really disappointing discussion to see happen from a developmental standpoint. Um, we have these standards, and sometimes you deviate from the standards, right? We all say we ran because we're open for business and we support economic development in Helena, and guess what? Sometimes that is the boring question of whether or not we make a slight adjustment to a road, right, that doesn't violate any explicable standard that we've been cited. Um, some people have articulated concerns, um, angles and radii, but no one has identified any specific pro- problem here. And that is an actual code violation. And sometimes you just have to do that. Heck, we threw them all out the window for some developers. Um, and here we're going, we're going bonkers over an eight-hundred, um, foot block. So, I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me tonight. Um, I'll, I'll be a no on this just because it doesn't make sense, but hopefully for the developers, they'll figure out a way forward. Um, I am gonna cross my fingers we don't see a private street, um, because then the five of us really screwed up on this one. Thanks.
Any other final comments? Um, well, for me, why, why I, I hear the, um, the city, I hear the employees, but there's been some confusion with, um, the violation. I mean, if it, if, w- it is so general that, uh, I, I'm struggling with it when we hear there's a fire code violation. For me, when I hear violation, if this is a fire lane and I park my car there, that's a violation. My car should be removed. But when we come into such general, just violation without, without pointing the violation, I am confused. And so, um, yeah, this is a, this is a pretty difficult, uh, uh, situation we find ourselves in. Because, um, I also blame us because if we had approved this before, why didn't we see those violations? And so, you know, this is where I'm at. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Uh, I would like to read just the two written comments into the record prior to the vote, if that's okay?
Please go ahead.
Uh, from Mark Grunkel. Where is the Fire Marshal? And again, from Mark Grunkel, what part of the fire code does not, does this not meet? Um, for the vote, uh, Commissioner Halliday.
No.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. At this time, um, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public wishes to address the commission. Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands? On any topic, that is, anyone from the public wishes to address the commission on any topic?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure. Are we doing general, uh, public comment at this point?
Yes.
I would, um, just ask that we make note then that that item has been moved up on the agenda ahead of public hearings.
Thank you.
Um, so I do have one hand raised, uh, by Timler, Tyler Emmert. His hand was raised during the last discussion, so I'm not sure if this is um, a current comment or not. Mr. Emmert?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Uh, sorry, I forgot to mention, um, when I was talking. Uh, ooh, and hopefully they're still listening. Um, we do wanna welcome Benefits to our community, uh, the great organization, a great company, uh, looking forward to their involvement and the services they provide. Um, hopefully they're still on. I understand we got into the intricacies of uh, right-of-way and fire code and turning radius, and hopefully they appreciate that we are in the capital city and we love to debate. And we may have some minor disagreements, but we'll figure it out and we'll move forward, and, uh, with open arms, do wanna welcome uh, a great company to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Emmert. Mr. Jordan, you had your hand up?
No, I was just gonna comment, uh, if we were going forward with item ten A on the agenda.
No, the, the time is way far spent. We'll have to put this on another agenda. Do we have any other comments? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, just, may I ask a quick clarifying? Because I think we had three more items, including one sort of that may have pub- individual public comment. Should they give public comment now, or do we know, are, are you suggesting that we put, we pu- we place these items on another agenda, and if we, do we know when?
Yes.
Since they're public hearings.
These on another agenda. Oh. You have the time to keep moving.
Well, Mayor, I, I don't know if the city staff has feelings on items A or C, which I think are more sort of policy, but I, I would be, I would like to hear from the staff as to whether or not we need to consider B or might want to do that if the applicants are on and have been on with us this whole time.
Right, okay. Madam Holoshock?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'll turn that over to Director Leland to find out if in fact the applicants are on the line or in the room.
Mayor Commission, I don't see them on the line, but I do know that they were very concerned about this. And we're planning to be here. I don't know if, if they just had something else going on as late as this went. But I don't know. Chris, maybe the applicant may not, but other than that, I don't see them on.
I see someone stepping forward in the, yeah, that's him.
Okay, we'll continue. Let's move forward. Agenda 10 Alpha, Public Hearings. Consider final passage of an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Set 13 of the Helena City Code by enacting new 7-13-6, which requires an application fee. No, sorry. Is that it? I think we've passed that, right? Oh, sorry. B, consider enlargement of sanitary and sewer service boundary for a new single-family dwelling located at 215 Alfalfa Road. Manager Holoshock?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This request came in quite some time ago. I appreciate that we will accommodate this request. It is an enlargement of the sanitary sewers service boundary for a new single-family dwelling located at 215 Alfalfa Road. I also understand that the applicant is in the chambers. And we'll turn it over to Director Leland to quickly share the information on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I will do this fairly quickly. I will share my screen just to give context to everything. Is what we're talking about is Fort Harris back in 1997 had lagoons that were located right here, were failing and did not have the capacity to be able to handle the expansion of the Fort Harrison and the VA. So they did an analysis and found that installing a sewer main and connecting to city services was much more economical for them to be able to do that. So that they worked with the city of Helena and installed a main that goes down Head Lane. And you can see it in the blue here, all the way down to Horseshoe Bend. And then as part of a development, the developer moved a lift station down to right in front of Happy Homes and then it's pumped up. So the question is right now is, or the request is, this property located right here, they're asking to connect to the sewer service. We do not have water service out there. There's concerns about fire and emergency services because of access going across the railroads as far as just totally annexing them. So that's what they're asking is to connect to city services without having full services with that. And then city code spells out what it needs to, to do. And they have several of the conditions that are put into the, into the memo that they have to meet to be able to connect without all city services. And one of them is to extend water when it comes around, pro-rata share for the streets, and then waiver of rights protest annexation. This is a little higher view. You can see the sewer main that goes down and actually bisects their property. And so they're asking to connect by state law. If they're within 500 feet or 100 feet of it for a single family, they have to either connect or get a denial from the municipality. One other issue that is out here is they have very, very high groundwater. So there is concerns about having septic systems in this location. And they have to do type-two treatment. It's an enhanced treatment to be able to even install or have a possibility of installing septic systems. So the recommendation is to allow them to connect with signing waiver of right annex and all the other conditions that are put into the memo. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Please, go ahead.
So moving forward, this would just, if, if this is approved, it would just be billed as, as a normal home. Is that correct?
Mayor Commissioner, yes, they're proposing a single-family home and that any other development or subdivision would actually have to come in front of the city commission per the development agreement that is out there. One other element that I have to add is that they will have to pay a rebate for, or reimbursement for the capacity of the lift station that was moved. So they have to pay a charge for that one. And we also have five others that are already connected to this. However, there has been a few that have been denied. So it's kind of been up to whatever the commission is looking at, at the particular time. So we have denied some, but five are connected at this time. So, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Halliday?
Yeah, for either Mr. Leland or Ms. Haugen, with regard to the annexation discussions, what plans do we have in place? And what phase is this parcel perceived to be timeframe-wise where the city would be seeking to actually annex this property?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, if I understand your question, this particular piece of property is not currently in any phase of planned annexation. And I think it may even be outside our urban standards boundary, but I don't have that map in front of me.
May I follow up, Mr. Mayor? Maybe a question for Mr. Leland. So I know you mentioned the type-two treatment, issues of the septic. The applicant's engineer indicated that without this sewer connection, a septic wouldn't even be permitted on the property. Do you know if that has changed based on what you were saying about type-two?
Mayor Commissioner, no, the engineer would be there. I was meaning more general in the whole area. And based on what they have with monitoring the level of groundwater, I would go with the, the engineer. I do not have any other information on that, on this particular site.
And then one more for now, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Leland, you mentioned that in the past, people had requested these. And I recall one from a number of years ago that the commission denied because it was, I think, outside of the service boundary. The property wasn't going to be annexed anytime soon. And the commission had indicated that we didn't want to do à la carte services for individuals who were not going to join the city, not pay standard city assessments, roads, open lands, other things like that. But potential, but build houses outside of city limits and put service, pressured on city services. Do you remember those discussions, one and two? Were those written down anywhere or was that just sort of the commission's feeling at the time to your recollection?
Mayor Commissioners, they are not really written down anywhere, but that was the feeling of the commission and the leadership at the time.
And sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more. But on West Side Annexation, when we've had individuals who've wanted to tap into sewer or water, what's been the general practice? Have we required those properties to annex in the last, say, 10 years? Or have we allowed them to purchase à la carte services for the most part?
Mayor Commissioner, this is my recollection on, there's been several and it depends. It depends on how far they are away from the city. What services are located next to them? If it's just water, it's just sewer. And majority of the time, to be able to have someone do an à la carte service is that they have a failed septic system and there's no way to put in a replacement drain field. So we were just allowing them to do a sewer service and then would have to annex and connect to the water as soon as it was available. And it was a plan that we were looking at annexing that, locate that, the West Side anyway. So it was in our growth policy and our plan. So that is my understanding of why it went forward as an à la carte. But it was a much easier sell because the services were closer. We do not have water very close to this location.
Mayor, if I may, I, I need to ask a city attorney, Joden, to step in. I do believe that there's, that, that might be an incorrect statement. And specifically, there is a section in code, I think, that applies based on the memo. Thomas, can, or city attorney Joden, can you please step in?
Yeah, just to add, Mayor Commissioner Halliday, city code requires all properties that want to be connected with a service area enlargement to be annexed, to be included in an annexation district or contained in an agreement for future annexation. And that's what's included in the packet here is a waiver for these property owners to preclude their future protest of an annexation when the city is ready to annex. And that's required of all properties that want to connect to water and sewer that, that are outside city limits or, or not in the water and sewer service boundary.
Mr. Jordan, is this in the water and sewer boundary? This particular, how far off is it? Do you know?
I don't know.
Director Leland, do you know?
As far as the water service area?
Yes, from this property.
From this property, it is, the closest water that we have is in Green Meadow Drive. So it's, I guess it, it would be a mile or so. It's a long ways out. And then to be able to get loop service and be able to run it, it's, it's considerable distance to be able to have water go out there.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I, I don't have anyone online that is wishing to make public comment on this item. However, I do believe there were some individuals in those chambers.
Do we have individuals in the chambers?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Brad Coon. I'm with TripleTree Engineering, 800 North Last Chance Gulch. I'm here on behalf of the Goodhues. We've been working with them for a while on developing sewer and water service to their properties. First of all, I just wanted to answer the question about whether there was an alternate for onsite wastewater treatment at the site. And the answer is no. The 100-year floodplain takes up almost the entire site. So there, there aren't any other options for onsite wastewater treatment at the site. There's just a couple other points that the Goodhues wanted to get across. First of all, the single-family residence is proposed and they don't plan anything other than that. And that's all that would be allowed at the time on their property. And then secondly, there's a, they're, they have two adjoining parcels right next to each other. And we just wanted to make it clear that they're only proposing to hook on the one, to the one parcel, 33D, the one that which the sewer line intersects and there's an existing sewer service on. That's the only parcel they're proposing to connect. The other parcel is not proposed. And I guess that's all we had. And myself and Mr. Goodhue are here to answer questions if you guys have any.
Any comments or questions? Do we have any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no one online that's wishing to make public comment on this item.
Okay. Any final comments from the commission? I'll intubate the motion. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to improve the enlargement of the sanitary sewer service boundary to include the Goodhue property located at 215 Alfalfa Road with the following conditions as spelled out in city code 6-5-4. Purchase sewer capacity for the proposed residence in the Stone Meadows Pump Station in the amount of 112.56.
Second?
They moved and seconded. Any final comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. And I can't support this one. Historically, the commission has always been very careful about extending services outside of city limits to circumstances where, you know, you're looking at a house that lost its septic. Here we've got a house being built in a floodplain that can't install the septic outside of city limits. And we're going to extend a service. For any of us, and I know yourself, Mr. Mayor, have talked about it. I know Commissioner O'Loughlin has. I've heard Commissioner Dean talk about it. We talked about county pressures that, right? Build outside of city limits and then use city services without paying for them. This, this is how it happens. And you, we extend a line that allows a single-family house to be built there. Another one will be built at another time. You'll extend those services again. And they're going to use your roads. They're going to use your public lands. And they're not going to pay general fund taxes for it. There's no plan to annex this property. There's no plan to develop out there. There's very few times the city actually has the ability to weigh in and say, we disapprove of this type of development in the external county. That's going to put pressure on city services, right, and not pay for them. And this is a stark example of it happening, not to mention the environmental questions that this raises. I'm, I'm sort of befuddled how we could consider doing this from an interest in our own taxpayers from the environmental standpoint and anyone who cares about decent, dense development. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other finer comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would it be possible to ask a quick question of the city manager?
Sure.
Commissioner Halliday mentioned environmental impacts. Do you have any response to that? Because that wasn't necessarily part of what we've reviewed for tonight.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for your question. An analysis of the environmental impact was not completed on this distribution request. And we can certainly add those to these kinds of annexation, or excuse me, sewer requests. The overall extension beyond, it is, it is the primary conversation that the commission has been having, which is that these, these additions outside the service area are not area evaluations that have been considered as part of our water work to date. And that larger picture of seeing down into the valley is, it is an accurate statement that in fact the property owners outside and in the county have not provided those fees.
Okay, any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Commissioner Logan?
Hi.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Hi.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion fails three to two.
Consider, consider approval of the final passage of an ordinance creating the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board by amending 2-6-3, existing board of Helena City Code. Manager Holoshock?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is the final passage on the ordinance creating the Affordable Trust Fund Advisory Board. The commission has heard the importance of establishing this advisory board who will make recommendations to you all on how to distribute those dollars. They'll also be part of the conversation in establishing the rules and requirements within the distribution itself. So any further questions? Director Haugen and her colleague Kara Snyder, who addresses the Housing Trust Fund work and is our housing expert, are available should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank Ms. Snyder for all her work on everything because she has presented multiple pieces of this to us and really appreciate all the detail that she's included. So I know this is, I think, her first big, bigger project for the city and really appreciate all the work.
Yeah, and Mayor, oh, sorry, Ms. Snyder, if you wanted to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. Thank you. It's been a big learning process and I really appreciate being a part of this. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I was just going to echo my appreciation. I missed, I think, first passage on this. And so I sent, conveyed, conveyed this over email, just how much I appreciate the responsiveness of the conversation we had initially about the makeup of it. I think this is a really great makeup of the advisory committee. And I think, you know, provides adequate expertise in, in this world that hopefully we will get some great recommendations of how to invest these, these trust fund dollars. So.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no public comment, either written or hands raised online. It appears that there's no one in chambers to make public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move to approve final passage of an ordinance creating the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board by amending section two six three existing boards of Helena City Code.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer comments?
Mayor, I'll just say very, very quickly, I'm glad to sort of see this final component piece sliding into place so that we can, you know, start the process of our FPU's possibilities for getting this trust funds money working. And I'm looking forward to see what you all and the city and Ms. Haugen and this board do over the coming years in, in putting this money to good use.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Halliday?
Hi.
Commissioner Dean?
Hi.
Commissioner Logan?
Hi.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Hi.
Mayor Collins?
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings. Consider final passage of an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Thirteen of the Helena City Code by enacting new seven dash thirteen dash six, which requires an application fee and cost reimbursement for cable and telecommunications franchises agreement to use right of way of property for the installation of telecommunications facilities. Manager Hallashock?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final passage of an ordinance amending the city code and establishes the application fee and cost reimbursement of cable and telecommunications franchises. And as well agreements within the use of right of way and other property for the installation of telecommunications facilities. I'll turn it over to city attorney Joden if there are any further follow up questions or additional information you'd like to share.
I have nothing, Mayor Collins, Commissioners.
Okay. Comments and questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised and no written public comment online and no one in chambers to make public comment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve final passage of an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Thirteen of the Helena City Code by enacting new section seven dash thirteen dash six, which requires an application fee and cost reimbursement for cable and telecommunications franchises and agreements to use city right of way or other property for the installation of telecommunications facilities.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Hi.
Commissioner Dean?
Hi.
Commissioner Logan?
Hi.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Hi.
Mayor Collins?
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no raised hands. I've received no other written public comment and no one in chambers is here to make additional public comment.
Any finer comments from the commission? Well, I thank you all for hanging in there with me. It's been a long haul. Four hours meeting. I think this is record, right? Well, I know you're waiting to go home. This meeting is adjourned.